Who whistled? We have an official whistler now here, too. It's 6:30. And we're missing Tracy, but I'm sure she'll be here, so we're gonna go ahead and go forward. Looks like we may have a few people here. We're gonna start the City Council meeting of December 16th. And we're gonna start with staff reports. Oh. I'm sorry, I missed this. We're gonna start with public comment. And in public comment, it is only about the items that are on the agenda tonight. You're allowed three minutes to speak. If you need to, if you need to have more time and you have someone else, that they will give you their time, as I understand it, that there needs to be sort of a sign-up agreement to do that. Just three minutes is all that you're allowed, according to Mr. Zatulio. At study sessions only. If there are several of you that are going to speak, I'm gonna ask that you group together in pros and cons, and then alternate, so that we're not bombarded with a slug of one and then a slug of the other. So, let's have some kind of a... How can we do this orderly? Give me a raise of hands of how many are intending to speak. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Oh, that's not that many. All right. I'm not that concerned, since there's only seven of you. Would the first person wanna come up to the podium? And please give your name and spell your last name for the clerk.
Hello, council. My name's Jesse Hill, H-I-L-L. Live at 2995 Chase Street. Wanted to say thanks for all having us here today. And great job on the reports to the staff. Very informed of what I was reading in there. Got a lot of great information out, not only to council here, but also the public. A lot of times I'll come up here, and I really enjoy the study sessions. Got to get an opportunity to talk more on the how business is done, rather than the specifics on what is done. I'll let some of the other people here kinda talk on those. In there, really saw on Status what was being done in the past. Streetscape, what we'll be doing in the past. But I really am interested to see a little more on the how, the funding, of how some more of these items are gonna come up here. Because there are a lot of great ideas, and I just wanna really honestly see some of them implemented. Covered in there, a good chunk on the growing the funding. The sales tax increase is a really great thing to see out there. Personally for myself, I'd love to have a baseline figure to know how much we're growing on. Whether this is, say, 1 million or 5 million revenues we're pulling out of the district. So we got a feeling where we're kinda moving in the future, and how much, I don't know. Every beer I spend up there is gonna come back to council, so. Second would be Business Improvement District. Really looking forward to hearing more on that. And having the businesses there really fund what's some of the improvements. I think the community also is really interested in that. And last would be on future revenue, future taxes that might have to happen to pay for some of these items. Say, in the streetscape manual, you know, 5 to 6 million dollars. That's some money that's gotta come from somewhere. You know, Business Improvement District. It really ties into how you guys look forward to implement this, too. Whether it's also the neighborhood. You know, tying that in, should it be a neighborhood improvement? Maybe you want, you know, it's not just one thing, it could be all. And last, you know, city-wise, how you address and look at that. Is this a city-wide input, too, when it comes to the funding? So, that's why only my comments and points, really looking forward to hearing some discussion, also hearing what the fellow citizens have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. May we have a next speaker?
Hi, Janice Hoppe, H-O-P-P-E. I live at 7,000 West 35th Avenue. My husband and I moved our business here, and we bought our building in 2010. We opened the doors in 2011 from the Berkeley area. One of the major deciding factors about why we moved here is because we saw the plan that was coming through City Council on the changes that were gonna happen on 38th Avenue. And we were extremely excited for that. We also then moved our home here from Denver. And so, as a resident and a business owner, I'm extremely excited about all the changes that have happened on 38th Avenue. And I know that they're temporary. I've seen some draft design on what it could potentially look like. And even with my property having such a long driveway, they were able to do some really gorgeous design work on that to make it more walkable and have a sidewalk and be more pedestrian-friendly. And it looked really great in front of our building. And so, I just would really like to encourage you guys to move forward and look forward on some of those permanent changes on 38th Avenue. Especially as I drive from Sheridan to Wadsworth in the evening, and I see all the gorgeous lights on the lower end of 38th Avenue. And I'm really looking forward to having that connect all the way through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppe. And next?
Mark Eskow, E-S-K-O-W. I live, work, and play on the corridor. I completely am excited for the progress that we're making with it. It has been... We've opened our business almost two years now in the spring. And we've not only seen the community grow and come out and support us, but we're seeing people come from as far away as Lakewood, Littleton, Golden, Arvada. They're coming to 38th Ave. And that's what we wanna see. And I think you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker? Give me somebody on the, give me an opposition. Let's mix it up here a little bit. Do we have somebody opposed to it? Thank you. Larry?
My name's Larry Merkel. I live just off of 38th Avenue, on, just off of Teller. And what I'd like to ask is, you're doing all this on 38th, and that's fine. It's probably going to happen. Maybe we can stop it, maybe we can't. But if you're gonna spend 5.5 million dollars, I'd like to see it go to a vote of the people. I think that the whole city should vote on that kind of an expenditure. Especially if you're gonna raise taxes to do it, you're gonna have to go to a vote of the people. The other thing, living off of Teller, we can't get out on 38th Avenue. We go down, you can't go left, you cannot get to Safeway. Lot of times during the day, you'll sit on Teller for 20, 15 minutes trying to get out there. So, most of us go 32nd if we wanna go somewhere important. We don't go down 38th Avenue. If you're going to continue this, I'd like to see a light on High Court, a turn signal on High Court, so when we go down, we can turn left. That light on High Court needs to be extended, so that we can get out. We can't get out of our neighborhood and go down and go up and down 38th Avenue. Sometimes you're in a traffic jam from Marshall all the way down if you wanna turn on Teller. So, normally, I just go down 35th Avenue. We don't use 38th if you live in the neighborhood. So, this is a problem that we have who live in the neighborhood there. You've turned a street that we could use into a traffic jam. Maybe it's good for the businesses, but it's not good for the residents who live there. So, if you're going to do this, could you look at either a turn signal on High Court, a left turn signal? Extending that light, so we can get in and out of our neighborhood? Or put a light on 38th and Teller? Because there is a traffic problem getting out onto Teller. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merkel?
My name is Roger Lasher, L-O-E-C-H-E-R. I am a resident of Wheat Ridge and also property on 38th Avenue. Somewhere along my way, you've heard the pitch that the speed has dropped from 40-something miles an hour down to 30 miles an hour something, and this is great. But let me tell you, if you get hit by a car at 30-something or 40-something, you break about the same amount of bones, and you're also about the same amount of dead. So, slowing the traffic down, that's not working. Okay? If you get time, well, let's see. We're slowing the traffic down, and if you have time, ask the Chief of Police, what is safe speed for is to drive down a window shop on 38th Avenue. I worked for UPS many, many years ago, and they said, I believe, if I remember correctly, your attention span should be focused, turn to the left maybe 3 to 5 seconds, to the right 3 to 5 seconds. And that's just driving a normal speed. So, we're not getting shoppers driving down 38th Avenue looking over what the merchants have for sale. Streets are for the purpose of delivering people to a designation area, and sidewalks are for going to a specific location. Restricting traffic on the street or sidewalk will not put customers in front of the cash register. Two lanes of traffic will not generate enough traffic or tuck us on the tish. And I don't know if you know what that means, but I believe it's Jewish for asses on the seats. And that's what we need is customers in the city, okay? Businesses are coming to 38th Avenue because of what's happening. That's probably true. But, think about the economics of what's really happening on 38th. 38th Avenue is a place to come because property values are cheaper on 38th Avenue, on this side of Sheridan Boulevard versus the other side. That's generating a lot, a lot of businesses coming across the city line, okay? What do we got for 600,000 or 700,000 dollars so far? We got faded street signs, tour parking signs, and a gathering of concrete flowerpots. Don't you wonder what would change if we would do the changes in the right way? Maybe we should be realistic about what's going on in the country for a whole, not just Wheat Ridge. You know, the people are coming here from other places. And part of it, the big part is economics. It's dollars and cents. They get more value for the dollar on this side of the street than they do on Sheridan. Why? Because nothing has happened here for the last 3, 5, 6 years. And that changes over a period of time. One day, we're gonna be dolared out on expenses, and it won't be economically feasible to come here again. It'll be another area. And the people, some of the people that are here, will move on to that area. New people will come to this area. You know, I think that's great that the city's spending money on 38th. But let's stop wasting it. I think there's much, much better ways we can take and put our dollars and cents, city dollars and cents, to use. Let's take the flowerpots off the street. Let's give us four lanes back. Let's get some traffic in our town. I don't remember that... I'm using some of Merkel's time. Or do you use all his?
We don't borrow and, we don't, you know, you don't take a minute from some person and add it. Are you close to finishing for us?
Okay. Am I 3 minutes up? All right.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Frank Stites. I've been on 38th Avenue in business 60 years. I have seen every single business change hands except mine and one other one in those 60 years. What we have now is the flowerpots. There's been 35 incidents where people have run into those flowerpots. I've made a record of it. If you wanna do something, get the flowerpots behind the street. Open that street back up. Traffic backs up sometimes 4 and 5 blocks. It slows down, all right, but it's dangerous. About 2 weeks ago, a bus with kids on it backed into the car. Lucky no one's hurt. But I'm telling you that if you continue with these flowerpots out in the right-of-way, somebody is gonna get seriously hurt. Cars have been totaled. 2 people on bicycles have been hauled to the hospital. Is this what you want? This is not the way to go about it. 6 cities in the country tried this type of operation. They had to go back to the original. We need that street in the format that it was. Put the flowerpots behind the street. Do the decoration behind the street. And it can look nice. Some of it looks nice now, but it's an extremely dangerous street to travel. When it snows, you have no idea where the lines are, because the street is zigging zagging in and out. I think you better think about this for the future. To waste 700,000 dollars and come up with the problems we've got, something has to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stites.
My name is Jerry Nealan. I have a business on 38th Avenue. I think I'm the other business that's been around as long as Hank Stites has. But anyway, I just wanna say thank you. I appreciate previous City Council. I think we're going in the right direction. There's a lot of buzz, a lot of activity going on on 38th Avenue. I hear from people from out of the city of Wheat Ridge, people in the city of Wheat Ridge. You know, it's nice to see something being done. And somebody else had said, "Nothing happened in the last, you know, 4 or 5 years." I was kinda thinking the same thing, and I didn't think it was gonna happen in my lifetime. I didn't think anything was ever gonna change. So, I just wanna say thank you very much. I appreciate you guys moving forward. I also, I chair the Leadership Committee, so I represent probably 30, 40 businesses and residents along 38th Avenue. And we all support what's going on, and a member of the Ridge at 38th. So, I appreciate you guys looking at it. I saw the drawings, they're awesome. So, let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nealan. And we have another speaker?
Eric Wilson, W-I-L-S-O-N. I live right off of 38th Avenue on J Street. And I just wanted to say thank you for all of council's work on 38th Avenue so far. I think it's been great. I also want to encourage council to... I know the plan being discussed tonight doesn't address 38th Avenue east of Pierce Street, but I just wanna encourage council to maintain the road diet east of Pierce Street. That's the section I live on, and I think having it be 2 lanes in that section makes for a more pleasant neighborhood. I think it makes it a better place to live. And I think businesses have also succeeded because of the road diet in that section. I know I've heard Wheat Ridge Liquors has said their business has gone up because of the road diet. And there's some more businesses coming in. Mama Sanino's moved in recently. And also Care Bear Bakery is coming to that section of 38th. So, thanks for all you've done, and I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Moving on to the rest of the meeting, we move on to staff reports. Oh, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda for tonight? None being acknowledged, we will move on to, finally, move on to staff reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no staff reports at this time.
Okay, then we... Was there something, Ken?
He's getting ready for the 38th Avenue.
Big show, huh? Okay, we're gonna move on to the 38th Avenue corridor report.
Patrick, are you the master of the light dimming? Sorry. Whatever reads well from out there. Great, thanks. Well, good evening. Ken Johnstone, Community Development Director. Glad to be here, as usual. We are here for our... About every 6 months, we've been giving you an update on the 38th Avenue corridor plan implementation. Normally, we're kinda focused on the implementation update, and we talk about the metrics. We talk about progress to date and kind of next steps. In the interest of time, because we do have a much larger agenda item, which is Agenda Item B, which is discussion of the streetscape recommendations. I'm gonna be fairly brief on this portion of the agenda, but we're glad to answer questions to your content on this topic as well. But wanna leave plenty of time for that second part of the discussion. So, again, implementation and metrics update I'll cover. And then as a group, between our design team, Mark Westberg, who's the project manager from the city side on the streetscape conceptual design project, and Intelliki, our design firm that's been working on this, as well as the firm that worked with us on the development of the corridor plan itself. There is quite a bit of history there on this project. I'm not gonna, again, spend a lot of time, I think on previous meetings, I might have spent some more time, just kind of reminding council and the public that we've been at this for a while. It really dates back to the adoption of the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy back in 2005, which one of the core recommendations from that strategy was to take a look at 38th Avenue and redefining its role in the community and improving the quality and the image of the street. There's been a lot of progress that's made since then in terms of adoption of a comp plan, adoption of a corridor plan. And again, I'm glad to fill in the details for anyone who's interested, but just wanna remind everyone that we're kind of ongoing on this since adoption of the 2011 corridor plan. We've been much more kind of hands-on in doing a variety of things. And we'll touch on a few of those this evening. So, accomplishments, metrics, and next steps, as I mentioned earlier, that's kinda been our format for reviewing the 38th Avenue corridor plan with you over the past couple of years since it's been adopted. And it has been just about 2 years. We adopted it in October of 2011, and we've reported that to you every 6 months since then. So, a few of those accomplishments. Back in 2012, we did have a city initiated, actually, a City Council initiated rezoning to the new mixed-use neighborhood zoning district for the whole corridor, really, from Wadsworth to Sheridan. We did give property owners an opportunity to choose not to be included in that rezoning effort, and there were a handful of folks that did. But by and large, the whole corridor has been redeveloped, or has been rezoned to that mixed-use neighborhood. And we have seen a couple of projects either reviewed and constructed, or reviewed and approved, and soon will be under construction under that new zoning designation. Jerry Nealan spoke earlier today, but the Leadership Committee being staffed by Wheat Ridge 2020, and Britta Fisher has been very active in terms of providing leadership and business synergy, as well as, you know, interacting with the residents as well. But many, many events and ongoing meetings to keep moving the project forward. I mentioned in the last bullet, the branding and marketing successes. I think that's been a real success in this year in terms of adopting the Rigid 38 brand. And then this year, really actively getting it out there on the street from a very proactive marketing plan, but also the website finalization earlier this year, the mobile app that's getting a lot of use, and really a lot of activity on that Rigid 38 site, in particular, leading up to the most recent event, which was the holiday celebration just a week or so ago. We do have more marketing of the brand, just in terms of actually on the street with the banners, and of course, the span banners across the street that have been installed just in the last several months. And swag, of course, the popular term used for a great way to get your brand out in terms of anything from stickers to t-shirt, and that's been real successful. The Pilot Road Diet obviously is a big component of this project, and a part of it that gets a lot of attention, though, I would just note that it's only part of the project, right? I mean, the project really is about creating a main street, committing an economic development activity center, and a place that people wanna be and that defines the community's image. But the Pilot Road Diet really was just that. It was constructed in the summer of 2012, so about 18 months ago. And it included the on-street parking, the back-end parking, the pop-up cafes, several of which have been very successful, the temporary planters, and of course, the road restriping. I think it's important to note that the whole purpose of the road diet was really to take a look at, you know, what could happen on 38th Avenue? And would it be successful? Would it work? Would it work from a road, from a traffic perspective? And, you know, when we went through the planning process, a big part of that planning effort was to talk about, you know, could a traffic study justify that a road diet, the 3-lane road section, would make sense? And the traffic study told us that, yes, they thought it could, but really, the road diet, the pilot project that is still underway, was really the way to truth-test that, to say, okay, we had a traffic consultant tell us this would work, but let's test it in the real world and make sure that traffic study was right. the real world and make sure that traffic study was right. And that's why we're tracking it with a variety of transportation-related metrics. Special events have been a big part of the accomplishments over the last two years. We've had several events in each year, they've been very well attended, we've been really pleased with our ability to move the annual holiday celebration to the rigid 38, and think that's been a great success in both of the last two years, even on a very frigid evening this particular year. The thing that we've been working on perhaps most actively, particularly at a staff level with our consultant team in 2013, has been this conceptual streetscape design of really taking the street section that was recommended in the plan and putting that on the street and showing how that could work and what different components would be on that. And that's really the second part of the majority of the agenda this evening. And then, of course, most importantly, I think this is always the message, is economic activity. We've been very pleased with the number of businesses that have opened. Obviously, there've been a few that closed along the way as well. The sales tax trends, we think, are real positive. So touching on the assessment metrics, we had indicated in the plan going into this road diet pilot project that we'd want to look at these for about an eighteen to twenty-four month period. It's been about eighteen months at this point. So we do have three reporting periods of data. You know, the big focus of that, as I mentioned earlier, is really on the transportation metrics and making sure really that the road is still going to be viable as a transportation facility. I think when we did the traffic study back in 2012 as part of the corridor plan, we understand it a few, we understood a few things, right? We understood that there would be greater delay in traveling the roadway from Sheridan to Wadsworth. We estimated between thirty and ninety seconds. We understood that there would be more congestion, certainly acknowledge the comment that there's more cross-street congestion and more difficulty crossing the street or making turns, and that's something that I think we continue to look at and is a very legitimate comment. We hoped and the study predicted that speeds would be lower, closer to the speed limit, and that is, in fact, how things have turned out. Traffic counts, it was predicted, might go down a little bit, and that there would be some diversion, though the traffic study predicted that would be very little. The data that we've seen to date suggests that there has been some traffic diversion. We believe it's within kind of the acceptable margins, and traffic counts on 38th are really fairly stable. I think the biggest takeaway, for better or worse, on the data is that there's no real anomalies, that really the data is coming back as predicted in the traffic study. There's no real trend lines in terms of the traffic data that catch our attention when it comes to things like traffic counts. I mean, they've been frankly up and down. If you look at the data in the charts that are in your packet, they really are up and down in those four reporting periods, one of those being pre-road diet and the other three being post-road diet. Accidents, the same way. I can't tell you that there's a clear trend that they're down, but I certainly can't tell you that there's clear trend that they're up. The data points are really back and forth as you look at year-over-year accident data. Emergency response was certainly something we were sensitive to, and I'd say the same thing there. We've seen anecdotally from our police department, I think, no concerns that there's been an increase in traffic or a need for emergency response. From our fire district, Wheat Ridge Fire Protection, they reported out of their last reporting session that their traffic, or their response times were basically the same as they had been before the road diet. Economic indicators is another kind of class of metrics that we've been tracking. Steve Art prepared a memo for you that was included in your packet that looked at principally sales tax trends, and it looked at sales tax trends at a macro level, as well as kind of a micro level in terms of across different sectors, whether it be general retail, auto-related uses, a few different breakdowns of that data. Generally, we think that sales tax data is trending real positive, and I think ultimately, when it comes to metrics, I think that's the big one, right? We want this corridor to be successful, and we think that that sales tax data is trending in the right direction. In terms of just a little bit of qualitative feedback on the road diet, you know, we probably all have our own opinions or have heard other people's opinions of the back-end parking. I think it's been successful in some minds, some people's minds, it's been, you know, really challenging in other people's minds, and we acknowledge that, too. The reality of this, the road section that we're looking at and we'll be talking about later in the agenda, is that we really don't, long-term, have room for the back-end parking if we want to have the other priorities, which is the sidewalks and amenity areas. We still have room for some parking, but more of a traditional parallel parking, and we'll go over that in more detail. The planters certainly acknowledge that those two have received mixed reviews. I always like to point out that it was a temporary project, that the idea was to kind of get a sense for, you know, what it would feel like to have some more landscaping, understanding that, you know, a temporary planner in the right of way was never the long-term solution that was envisioned in the plan, but rather a more permanent investment in landscaping and sidewalk amenities. So acknowledge that they're maybe less impactful than we'd like, and I think, to me, that says, you know, we should have the conversation that we're going to have about whether there's a scenario where we could make a more permanent investment. A couple of the pop-up cafes, we think, have been wildly successful in terms of just generating pedestrian activity on the street, as well as economic activity for the businesses that were associated with them. So we think that the notion of having people on the street in a cafe has been very successful. Media exposure, this is one that we haven't talked a lot to you about in our previous updates, but we've been just thrilled, I think, in the last, really, six months since our last reporting, to have had just a slew of different media exposures in the Denver regional media, from articles in the Denver Post to features in the Denver Business Journal, a three-and-a-half-minute segment on the CBS4 Evening News back in the summer. So, and of course, various local publications, both in the transcript and the Your Hub, as well as some of the North Denver Tribune articles. So we've been thrilled to get that exposure. I think that exposure, you know, starts to put us on the map, starts to put the rigid 38 at the map, and attract investment in the community, whether it be on 38 or really elsewhere in the city as well. Next steps, marketing and branding. Obviously, we've got a good start, and it's all about building the momentum on that and getting that brand out there and getting it recognition. Events are going to continue to be integral. We've got a new one that Wheat Ridge 2020 is going to be introducing in 2014. In addition to the existing events, the Wheat Fest, the Holiday Celebration, and Trunk or Treat, which have all been successful, they're adding a bike criteria pending U.S. cycling approval still, so there's still a few logistics to work on that for 2014. Obviously, development of the streetscape design alternatives is what we're here to talk to you about tonight, so I'll defer for that. We want to start talking about, you know, whether it makes sense to be contemplating an additional capital investment project. The civic component is something that we've been back in front of you on, it's really a core recommendation of the 38th Avenue corridor plan, that you look in that area between kind of High Court and Uppam, really the area where you already have some civic components between the Grange and the fire district, and of course, Wheat Ridge 58, of whether there's an opportunity to expand a civic component and make that part of the success and the economic driver of a successful downtown. I think there's plenty of models out there locally, nationally, certainly in the Denver metro area, of looking at how a civic component, whatever that might be, whether it's a cultural facility, or an entertainment facility, or, you know, something as traditional as a city hall, but something like that that brings people to a location on a consistent basis and how that really anchors and serves as an economic development anchor for a downtown or a main street area. One thing that we want to look at, and we don't need to spend a whole lot of time on this tonight, is that there's a grant opportunity that we took a hard look at from the National Endowment for the Arts. It's called the Our Town Grant. We took a look at it this year in partnership with 2020, and deciding whether it was something that we thought it was the right year to apply for. It's really about placemaking, it's about public art, it's about funding arts organizations, it's about special events, but really, I mean, as the grant suggests, about creating our town, right? And defining that in a real physical way. It does include the potential for capital construction dollars, up to $200,000. We decided that perhaps we weren't quite there yet in terms of having a good, strong application. We like the idea of getting capital construction dollars. I think that's one thing that we always struggle to find, as council is well aware. And $200,000, while not a huge number, is something that might be able to achieve something. And specifically, one of the things that's come up during the planning process, but also in subsequent comments, I know that I've heard from the leadership committee and from other people that are active on the corridor, is let's talk about this green, right? We've got this great partnership with the school district. We've been able to hold a number of events there anchored at the green at High Court, but could it be better, right? I mean, could it be something that's really more anchored, that has some more physical improvements that lend themselves to special events and really create more of an iconic kind of destination of, you know, that that's not just a lawn, but it's got some physical features that make it more programmable, more functional, and more identifiable as the rigid 38. So we think maybe if we spend a little bit of design money in 2014, that we could come forward, assuming that grant program still exists, and we're optimistic that it still would, with a real strong application in 2014. We've thought about the need probably for some sort of public process to support that effort, so that we can include that as part of our grant application at the end of next year. So about this time next year is when they would typically be due. So that's something that we'd like some input on, of whether you support that, and if so, we'd come back with you in a month or two or so with a proposal and potentially a public process around that, where we could really develop a concept plan for what, some real physical improvements to that green area could be. And with that, as I said, I wanted to keep this section short, but I am glad to answer questions that council may have.
The floor is open for council questions or comments. The room is silent.
I do have the traffic data, if people are interested, so if we want to pull that up, I do have those charts available.
Mayor, we can take all questions at the end, too, if that's council or otherwise. So we have a couple more presentations.
Okay.
We've got time for questions later.
Yes, so I'll turn it over to Scott Brink and Mark Westberg to introduce the next agenda item.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Mark Westberg from the engineering staff here. He's been the project manager for 38th Street through its duration, at least the most recent years here, and he will also introduce our design team from Intellicy and Dina Svetlik and her staff. And turn it over to Mark here.
Well, we're just gonna, we're gonna jump right into it. Before we get started, I just wanted to really acknowledge the help that we in Public Works have gotten from community development on this. Lauren Mickelak, who's sitting over there hiding, has done a great job of helping us with stuff, and the input that we've gotten from Ken and also from our staff, Steve and Scott, and then the consultant, too. And then we had, we had a lot of public outreach, we'll talk about a little bit later, but we had a lot of great feedback from the public on this. It's really been a very involved process that we've had. So we're gonna, we're just gonna try and zip right into it. So what we're gonna talk about really quickly is just the focus of this phase, and you can see the things we're gonna talk about there, and then the real meat of this is going to be getting into the alternative concepts. We're gonna talk about a survey that we had, our design inspiration, that's the part Dina's gonna do for us with our consultant. And then the concepts, I'm gonna talk some about that. The original plan was to have Dina do a lot of the talking here, so you guys wouldn't have to listen to me, but she had a cold over the weekend, her voice is marginal at best at this point, so we're reserving her part to the really, really good stuff that she needs to talk about, and you guys have to just put it with me yakking about the rest. So the geographic area, this really focuses in on the main street area, which is the red part, the red part here in the middle of the slide, which is pretty much from Wadsworth over to Pierce, but really focused on Uppam to Pierce. The schedule that we've had, the council, the previous council, some of which you guys were here, authorized this project back on July 8th. We gave our consultant an unreasonable schedule to do, and they did a great job of doing it. We had a city survey that we ran through the end of July and partway into August, that we had 330 participants involved in. We had a public open house, we had just over forty, we had like forty-one people sign up. We know some people were there that didn't sign up, so we had over forty people there. We also did block-by-block outreach, where we met with the four main blocks in the invitation that was included in your council packet, or in the process summary booklet, of how we did those block-by-block meetings, because each little block sort of has some nuances that are a little bit different. And we had, we had a great response on that. We had a lot of good businesses. We did a lot of outreach on that one. Lauren actually went out and knocked on people's doors and invited them to come, and it may have coerced a little bit, but we had great response on that. Leadership committee meeting, we met with them back on September 11th to sort of do a preview of everything that we've got. That, I think, went really well. And then, of course, we're here tonight with the council at our study session. So this part of it, Ken's gonna go ahead and take care of, because he's got a lot more history on the next five or six slides than I do.
Thanks. Yes, you get more of Mark and I here, I'm back. So not to belabor it, but we do want to go back and give you a little bit of history about, you know, why we're here. Why are we talking about creating a permanent streetscape on Main Street, 38th Avenue? This is a graphic from our 2009 comprehensive plan envisioned Wheat Ridge. And you can see in red a number of commercial corridors, both east and west, north and south, and all of these are priority corridors. We actually had five priority areas in the comp plan, Wadsworth, Kipling, Clear Creek Crossing, which is the former Cabela's site, the TOD site in the northwest part of town, and 38th Avenue. 38th Avenue, you can see there, was defined in this location as the 38th Avenue Main Street, and in conjunction with the Wadsworth Town Center and mixed-use development. I think one thing I'd want to acknowledge is that, you know, 38th Avenue really, in our minds, from a comprehensive planning standpoint, is unique. It's really a historical opportunity, and when you look at some of the historical utilization of 38th Avenue, to create an identity for Wheat Ridge. And I'd also just kind of acknowledge that, you know, the idea of doing a main street or a street that has maybe less vehicular capacity is not something that we're recommending throughout the city. You know, Wadsworth and Kipling, you know, maintain themselves as very commercial corridors. 48th Avenue, perhaps to a lesser extent, and certainly the Youngfield and Applewood area, we recognize, while we want it to be pedestrian accessible, certainly have much more commercial and vehicular-based access components. So 38th Avenue is really our opportunity as a community to create a unique main street area. We did a little bit of math in getting ready for this meeting, just kind of looking at, you know, what is 38th Avenue between Uppam and Pierce, which is the area that we're talking about tonight in terms of a potential permanent streetscape, represents about 3% of the commercial arterials in the city. So, you know, really a small area that we're trying to create as our town, our town center and our downtown. This is another graphic from that comprehensive planning document envisioned Wheat Ridge. This is the transportation structure plan, and if you can see him from the audience or for council, the yellow corridors are really the corridors that are designated for capacity improvements and traffic safety improvements, acknowledging that, you know, there are a number of our commercial corridors that would be better served by some capacity improvements to handle the traffic, both existing and future. This corridor, Main Street, is different than that on 38th Avenue, and that is the one corridor that we chose to designate as that main street designation. So the starting point for this process that we've embarked on over the course of 2013, this design process, really began with the 38th Avenue corridor plan. As I mentioned earlier, that was adopted in October of 2011. This is a graphic from that document. And, you know, this became really the starting off point for the design process. As I mentioned earlier, you know, one of the key things that we did in that corridor planning process was to validate the feasibility, in our minds, of a three-lane road section for the section of 38th Avenue from Uppam, from Wadsworth to Sheridan, but with some transitions on either end. So we went out through a very public process through 2010 and 2011, and the question that we gave to the public through a series of public meetings and other public input venues was given the limited right-of-way. We generally have about sixty feet of right-of-way, there's a few exceptions to that, so there's not a lot of room to do things. What would you prioritize? And we really gave them three choices. We said, we've got amenity zones and sidewalks, so amenity zones being landscaping, street furniture, things you might typically associate with a main street environment, and broader sidewalks. You know, we have hit-or-miss sidewalks in 38th Avenue, particularly in the main street area that we're talking about this evening. And typically, you'd expect to see about an eight-foot sidewalk at a minimum, really, to have an enhanced walkable main street type of zone. The second choice was on-street parking. We recognize the importance of having parking to support our businesses and support economic activity on the corridor, so that was another choice. You could prioritize on-street parking. And then the third choice was bike lanes. Wheat Ridge, like many communities in the Denver metro area, pride themselves on being a bike-friendly community. We have some challenges in that regard that we could probably continue to make improvements on, and I think as a community, we'd probably like to do that, but was that something that you'd want to prioritize on 38th Avenue? And really, in descending order with the first choice- And really in descending order with the, the first choice being on the top, what we heard from the public was we want amenity zones and sidewalks. We want the seat, the street to be more attractive, to feel better when you're, when you're walking on it, when you're using the street, and to have better walking facilities, so better sidewalks. The next choice was on-street parking, and the third choice in fact was bike lanes. So that led us to two preferred road sections in the corridor plan, and again, this is a document that's from that adopted 2011 corridor plan. And this is really the wider road section, so for certain portions, generally in kind of that High Court area, we have a wider right-of-way and a little bigger room to work with. So the road section that we developed in that instance has one additional feature. So on both sides, and I'll talk to that in a second, it has an eight-foot sidewalk and then a amenity zone that buffers the sidewalk from the street, and then on the other side, the same thing, an eight-foot sidewalk and then a six-foot amenity zone for street furniture and landscaping. As is out there today in the re-stripped version, you have one travel lane in each direction, a shared center turn lane, and in the 70-foot section, this wider section, you see that seven-foot parking zone. And then in the second road section that was approved, and this is really for the 60-foot right-of-way, you see that, that parking area go away, that there isn't room, if you want to maintain the eight-foot walk and the six-foot sidewalk on both sides, to have that, that on-street parking. So again, as a starting point into this design process, we knew that we had a number of challenges. Right-of-way, I've already mentioned, 60 feet is just a, a limited amount to work with. We have existing utilities that are always challenging, driveway curb cuts, and the number of access points, I think, is a, is a big challenge and one that we've tried to work through in this, this design process. And then of course, private parking lots that back right up to the right-of-way and that are very important to the success of the businesses that own and use those. ADA compliance in terms of accessibility is a big issue, both in terms of the continuity of the sidewalks, the width of the sidewalks, the cross slopes as you look at drive pans, so a lot of issues that relates to accessibility and ADA access. And then no consistency, I think, in terms of defining the Main Street, one of the things that you look to do is to really have some consistency and identity, or what we're calling the kit of parts. And we'll talk more about that kit of parts in just a, a few short moments. We also had some goals kind of going into this design process. We knew what we were looking at was to have some sort of a permanent amenity zone, a consistent amenity, amenity zone as well. As you can imagine, obviously we're trying to enhance pedestrian mobility and connectivity, lots of sidewalk gaps, a real need for wider sidewalks, and try and reduce those conflict points with onsite access into parking lots for vehicles. The Ridge at 38th logo obviously is critical to the overall success of the corridor plan implementation and the brand, the marketing efforts, so how do you incorporate that into the, the streetscape improvements? And then public art is something that we, we hear a lot about in terms of as a community starting to prioritize that. We've had the opportunity to include that on a, some public projects like Discovery Park where we got a great piece of public art, and I think we'd like to do more of that. We have a public art fund, so look for opportunities to identify locations for public art. And then again, that, that unifying overall street corridor design, but also acknowledging that this suburbia plan or corridor plan is really a series of districts. We're talking tonight generally about the Main Street District, but we have two other districts moving to the east towards Sheridan. In the center, we have what we refer to as the residential district, and we're actually pleased to see that there are actually some residential projects that are moving forward in that area as well as some mixed-use projects. And, and then at the far end, at the Sheridan end of the corridor, that's also the, what we refer to as more of the commercial corridor. So we acknowledge that streetscape improvements have been made in that area already, and we want to integrate whatever the overall concepts are into those improvements. Do you want to get that?
So, so one of the things that we did during our public meeting that we had on, on July 25th, we had several laptops set up where people could go look at things. We also had these printed out, but the image preference survey and the slides are in your packet, they also show up back up in the, in the, in the, in the presentation here. But we, we publicized that a lot. We, we sent out a bunch of emails, Britta sent out a bunch of emails on her email list. We tried to get the word out really well, and to have 40 or so people show up at our open house and then get 360 people actually sign into the survey and get 330 of them actually complete it, we think is a great, it was a great success for this. We got some great responses. It's, it's a really large response to a city survey. We had nine categories that talked about the kit of parts, and that's the various pieces and parts of things, the benches, the lights, the trash cans, all those things were included in that survey to try to, to try to narrow in on what kind of a theme, not necessarily the specific picture we had, but sort of the theme that was, that was gonna come out of this. We use it as a guide, as it mentions there, to kind of get up from the general public to get their preferences on things, and so it, it guided us towards our final kit of parts. The other thing, we had question number 10 was about the, the on-street parking, and we very specifically asked about the, do we do parallel parking on both sides of the street or keep the back-end parking out there? And as you can see, two-thirds of the respondents said they'd prefer to have parallel on both sides. I was actually surprised that the, the back-end parking actually got one-third of the people that liked it, because I don't hear much good about that when people come talk to me. Maybe those that like it don't talk to me, the other ones do, but, but you know, the, we, we've heard this message loud and clear, and, and we think the, the conventional parallel parking on both sides of the street is gonna be a real asset to the corridor as we, as we keep charging down this path. We had a couple of other comments that the back-end parking was just way too difficult to navigate for some folks. I know I practiced, I just, I'll be honest, I practiced backing up in my car, and that the street needs more trees, we just don't have enough trees. You know, the, the eastern third of our corridor looks great with all the streetscape we've got there from the, the project we did back in the early 2000s, but we just need more trees on the, on the western side, and that was something that, that showed up quite a bit in our comments that we had. So the, the design inspiration part of it is the, is the part that we're gonna have Dina talk about with what little bit of voice she's got left here, so be patient with her and she's gonna tell us where we, where we started from and where we landed.
It's been 13 years since I've lost my voice, so it'd be a little bumpy to listen to me, but hopefully the information will be disseminated a little bit more smoothly. So design inspiration, you know, our team, we had the public meeting, we had the survey, and then, and, and we sat down and looked at the information from the Ridge at 38th branding process and brought all that together and set really these five key design goals that we use moving through the conceptual design process. And that first one being that the design should be modern or contemporary. That was very much the, the vein of the Ridge at 38th brand, and so we wanted to pull that forward. And especially I think it's because of really when Wheat Ridge boomed. I mean, it really boomed mid-century, and so why not play up on that on the design of your Main Street and really celebrate that that was the time that the community grew? Recall mid-century, again, that second goal follows that as well. Forward-thinking, we were hearing that a lot from a lot of the public and the meetings that we had and businesses that we met with. We know that, you know, the city's changing, there's a lot of, of younger individuals and families and couples and so forth moving in, and they really want to look forward to the future. What is the future of Wheat Ridge? What is the future of this Main Street? How can this really be that, that monument to the future for the community of Wheat Ridge? Next is more welcoming, welcoming to those younger families and people that are moving into the community. And lastly, unique, and we heard this over and over, you know, how can this be like no other place in Wheat Ridge? Ken talked a little bit about that in terms of some of the other commercial corridors, but like no other Main Street in the state of Colorado or in America, so how do we really make that unique? So we started by looking at design inspiration, and some of the first things that we pulled were sort of mid-century designs of the time. And so this slide and the next couple will just show you some of the imagery that we pulled for design inspiration. And this slide basically just shows different colors and patterns of materials that were used in the time of mid-century. Next, we pulled some imagery for masonry or paving patterns, and a lot of the mid-century paving patterns were a running bond, meaning the images in particular that you see on the left in the middle, meaning very simple bonds, simple lines were mid-century. And so that running bond, ashlar bond are imagery that we pulled for potential paving pattern inspiration. Next, we looked at lighting, and not necessarily specifically street lighting at the time or pedestrian lighting, but overall lighting and how that could be an inspiration for the design. And so here we looked at style, color, and materials of lighting fixtures. And then next, we also pulled furniture and additional fixtures. And here we looked at the materiality, materials that were being used at the time, there was a lot of wood, some of the forms of those materials, how they were molded, the shapes and, as well as the colors. So those were some of our design inspirations. And then lastly, I love this image of a particular sign at the time, and we pulled this more for, really for shapes and angles, and you'll see that influence in some of the design alternative recommendations. So starting to look at it all together. We pulled together two kit of parts, so as was mentioned, the, the benches and the trash receptacles and the lighting and pulling that all together. And what you see here isn't final, and it's not the first thing that was presented. We vetted several different options with the staff group and honed that in to really keep with that mid-century mode. And so the first kit that you see here is very much about, I mean, both of them quite frankly are very much about streamlined and midcenturies, clean, simple lines. I would say alternative A is even meant to be more simpler than alternative B. So alternative A, we're introducing more wood, wood patterns, the tree grates that we're proposing, a little difficult to see here, it's a very simple elongated striation in a tree grate, some of those long paving patterns that I mentioned. In this particular kit of parts, we're looking at lighter paving patterns, whereas in alternative B, we'll see some darker paving patterns for special paving, which would be used in that amenity zone or that space between the sidewalk and the street, and then as well perhaps is in some special crosswalk treatments. In terms of the lighting, in this alternative, we're showing sort of a, let's say, a rounded light fixture, something that has a little bit more rounded, either the entire pole could be rounded or the, just the luminaire, the top of it could be rounded, just a little bit different approach to lighting in this particular kit. And then the second kit of parts, alternative B, we looked at again, just a little bit more embellishment. You might say, well gee, they look the same to me. Again, they are meant to be very similar because we went through the effort and the discussion with staff to hone it down to something that we thought was still in the vein of staying mid-century, just with this one perhaps having a little bit more embellishment, maybe a little bit less use of wood and using metals in terms of the benches were seating and have some, and having darker paving patterns, and then more rectilinear lighting. And then, so then starting to look at it all together. We started by looking at some of the existing signage on 38th, and a lot of that has been an outcome of the branding effort. So the new over-the-street banner, that's now in place, that exudes the Ridge at 38th brand, the banners and that you see, and we played up on that a little bit more in looking specifically at some additional signage. I'm gonna grab some water. We looked at some additional signage that may complement the work that's already been done, and specifically looking at opportunities to potentially infuse informational kiosks or wayfinding into the district. And so this slide shows simply some of those conceptual signage ideas of introducing what could be an informational kiosk, might have a map of the district that play up on some of the, the mid-century themes, the, I love seeing the word parallelogram, haven't said that since middle school. So just some different design ideas, and you'll see those integrated a little bit further into the alternatives, perhaps some low walls or more identity for the corridor that could be integrated in certain places where there's additional room on the street. And then one thing specifically Wheat Ridge 2020 asked us to look at was another very important component to this is signage and wayfinding for parking. Where are those parking reservoirs that people can get to and park once and, and walk along the Main Street? We also looked at some potential locations for art, and most of those locations, and Ken and Mark both mentioned that basically the western part of the district from Uppam south, Uppam I'll call it, over to High Court is where that wider right-of-way is, there's about 70 feet plus in that area. And so we have more opportunity for bulb-outs, wider amenity zones, and so better opportunities to infuse and instill art into the corridor. Nothing is decided on in terms of specific pieces or locations, just conceptual locations at this time in the process. And I guess I'm turning it back over to Mark.
We're trying to save Dina's voice for some questions later on tonight. So we're gonna talk about the alternative concepts just a little bit. We're gonna, there's quite a few slides in this, we're gonna try and get through it just as quickly as we can and try to really highlight the differences between the two, the two different things, but they do have a lot of similarities. We do have a lot of similarities, though the first one is address access enhancement, and that's really a, a really nice word for dealing with all the driveways and what we can do with those. We did some conceptual designs, the big thing we're looking for is to provide a more continuous sidewalk than we have, something that accommodates more amenity zone along the entire length of the corridor. And then, and then also a greater predictability for drive, for drivers. My, my experience with drivers, if you give them a really wide driveway to come in and out on, they get confused and you've got people leaving where they should be coming in and, and all kinds of things are happening. In our block-by-block meetings, we spent a lot of time talking about these access enhancements. Some of the folks were, were talking about consolidating driveways, they've got two now, they get one, possibly we share some driveways with some neighbors, and overall, we had some fairly positive conversations. We have a couple places where there were some real identified impacts that we as staff and the designers didn't notice that the property owner shared with us. We'll continue to work on those as we work through this process. I know that I promised every property owner that we, that we're gonna impact, that we're gonna come right back out and meet with them again, assuming that we continue with the design, because I really, you know, the last thing we want to do is drive anybody out of business. We want to keep people just as, as whole as we possibly can, but, but getting these accesses, getting these enhancements done is really critical to, to getting that continuous sidewalk. We've got, we've got some places with driveways that are over 100 feet long where people can just back right into the street, and those kind of, those kind of things are just dangerous for us in a, in a Main Street area. We're looking at the on- and off-street parking configurations, we're not, we're not wanting to change a lot of off-street parking things, but some places where people back in the street, we've got some options that we've, that we've floated, some of which keep the people with the exact same number of spaces they have now, some they lose a few and, and those kind of things, but we're, again, we're gonna work with them and we'll continue to work with them on that. And then also try to enhance and highlight the bus stop locations. One of the things I keep hearing out there is that, is that the younger generations would like to ride the bus more and things rather than drive, they like to walk more, and so we're trying to make sure that we, we've got those accommodations for them, for them with the, with the buses. So the, the next three slides show the different parts of the corridor, and, and we just got the, the aerial up above, because it's, it's the, the best picture we have for detail, still shows the old five-lane section in this part. This is what we'd be proposing to do. Again, this street layout where the trees are, where the travel lanes are, where the parking is, where the crosswalks are, all of that is pretty much the same on both alternatives. It's, it's the other things that set the two alternatives apart, and we're gonna, we're gonna talk about those in just a minute, but we just wanted to, to just show you these. We're not gonna spend a lot of time talking about them. The one big thing I want to point out is that, you know, we used to have the crosswalk here at Teller, now the crosswalk's at Uppam. We've got our flashing signs there that seem to be working pretty well, we've gotten some pretty positive feedback, but the big thing is we've got five lanes of traffic for people to cross here, and the new scheme with these bulb-outs that get put in, with this extra bit of sidewalk, we've only got three lanes of traffic for the folks to get across, and so it's a much safer condition for people crossing the street. The worst thing to ever try to cross the street is, is four to five lanes of traffic, it's just awful. This is sort of the middle piece from High Court over to just past Reed Street, again, just showing very conceptually what we could do. We've got some areas we're still working on, in particular in front of Wheat Ridge Cyclopes, we're still waiting for the weather, the weather to get a little nicer. For some reason, they didn't want to meet when it was five degrees out, in which was the date that we sort of had, so we're gonna continue to work on that conceptual design in those locations. Then this is the far eastern portion. The other part that we had possibly for public art was right here at Pierce Street, or maybe not so much public art, but maybe some, some entry signage or something that you've now arrived at the Main Street part of, of 38th Avenue. We have some opportunities at these two corners to possibly do something there. So those are sort of the things that are real similar about the two corridors. The other thing we got is because the parking layout's the same, this graphic was really hard to do. We went through about three different iterations in this thing to try to show what's happening. We finally narrowed it down to just the things that are sort of changing on the graphic, and so this, where you see the blue, that's the on-street parking. The, the number at the front was how many spaces were there before the 2012 project. The middle number is how many spaces are there today, and then the third number is how many spaces we end up with in the future. And, and you'll notice that, that, in this case, the number from before the project was four and after everything is three. We lose one space because we make those bulb-outs a little bigger than what was there before, and we also have to, because of some federal guidelines, we have to accommodate accessible parking, the handicap parking now within those zones, and so we've gotta, we've gotta leave some room to, to get those folks off the street and up onto the sidewalk and stuff. And so that's why there's some of those changes. You'll notice on this last one, there was zero before, there's 12 there now, and there's zero later, because as we'll talk about as we go through this, we lose the on-street parking. Cause as we'll talk about as we go through this, we lose the on-street parking from here over in order to, to add the amenity zones and the sidewalks that we're, we're getting. So, and then the part in the middle as we, the, the, the kind of orangey color, I think that's orange, shows the, the parking on the off-street lots that changes. We have a couple of lots that changed by one space, three lots that changed by one space. And we have, we have two lots that changed by four and five spaces, which we think is very impactful. And that's the part that we're as staff, we're gonna continue to look at and continue to work on, in particular with those property owners, to try to get those parking spaces back, but still do it. So we've got a very discreet driveway to make things a lot more predictable, both for the cars and the pedestrians. So we're not advocating that Wheat Ridge Cyclory lose all five of their spaces and that's just the way it's gonna be. And sorry guys, we're, we're gonna continue to work with them on that to come up with some ideas. And I think they have some ideas of their own that they're gonna share with us when we get together. So the biggest differences between alternative A and B. The big thing is, is that A is a more flexible alternative, if you will. And then B is a more fixed alternative. We're gonna talk about that as we go through some of the pictures and the diagrams as we go along. And same thing with the planting, the planting is more flexible in A and more fixed in B. And we'll talk about what the impacts of that are. The lighting, as, as Dina mentioned, is more curved in A and more perpendicular in B. And then lighter color paving, darker color paving. And then the kiosks are different also. I wanna, we sort of have these grouped in A and B. If you guys like everything in A but hate the, the signs, but you like the signs in B, we can always swap those things around. So, so we have, we're not fixed with everything in A, it has to stay in A. We can decide what we want of all these alternatives and then proceed onward from there. We just, we grouped them in two pieces to, to, to get a conversation started. So this is just sort of an overhead of the flexible alternative. You can't really see much in this picture, so we're just gonna move on. This is the part that's down in the wider right of way. This is the part where we do have not so much, and even beyond what we have for right of way, we actually have some additional easement on the school side for some of that really wide sidewalk we have over there where the tree lighting ceremony and everything was. This is what that sort of looks like. And this is a blow up pretty much right at, at like Teller Street and Uppam Street. Where you see, you see we have on-street parking on both sides of the street. We have this amenity zone with sort of a blonde colored pavement. We have a nice wide sidewalk on, on both sides. We sort of have these seating areas at the bulb outs. We have a few little things that you can't tell what they are here, but we have some things along the amenity zone. Then we have the trees planted, planted at a pretty regular spacing. We've got much improved crosswalks with some nice directional ramps at the various locations. So those are the things we're sort of looking at with the flexible alternative. And, and in the, the coming views, this is the smaller street section, the narrower street section, which doesn't have the on-street parking. And so that's what this looks like. It's, it's simpler, we don't have as big, we don't really have the bulb outs at all in this section. And my pointer is flickering. But we do still have the enhanced crosswalks on the side streets in particular. We still have amenity zones and we still have the wider sidewalks, which were the things that were all part of the goal coming out of the original plan. So looking west at Uppam, the things we wanna point out here in this view, this is if, this is probably if you're my height and you're standing on the other side of Uppam, or maybe you're on my shoulders or something, we're looking up a little bit. We've got the signage, the kiosk signage here at the, at the ends. So people, when they get to the corridor walking, they sort of know where to go to find the cyclory or to find pizza or to find beer or whatever it is. We have these seating areas and you see we sort of have chairs and we have planters and we have things there. We've got the on-street, here's this little example of the handicap parking that we have. And then, and then we just have the things that are very flexible, you know, this, we, we sort of have standalone fixtures. We have trash cans and, and, and bikes and everything. This is looking east at Uppam. Sorry, we had at least six people look at these things and we still, we still ended up with typos. That's looking east at Uppam, sorry about that folks. This is definitely looking west at Teller. So the thing we wanna really highlight here is it shows these seating areas. This is, this is why we lose a parking space or two. We've got these very large seating areas in these bulb outs that we have. And you can see it's chairs, it's planters, it's, it's things that seem more flexible. We could move them over time, we could swap them out a little bit easier over time. And then same thing on this side of the street, we sort of have some, some different things. We have tree grates around the trees. You know, the, the hardscape is pretty much flat and linear in this, in this option. On, on this option looking west near Teller, so we're back down on the ground. The thing I'm gonna highlight here is that because we have this eight foot sidewalk, we now have the opportunity to put a little bit of a cafe out here. And we had at least one property owner, business owner, that talked to us about, I don't want any parking in front, I've got plenty behind. I want even wider sidewalk, cause I want an even bigger cafe out front. And they really recognized the importance with these restaurants of having this, this little cafe out front. And I know that I've driven by a certain pizza place at times and thought, maybe we should go there tonight, and everything was full. It was, cause we had the dog with us and we couldn't eat outside. But you know, the, the cafe was just full. Most of the times I drive by during dining hours, the cafe's just full. So we see those as a really important amenity. The other thing I wanted to point out in this one is that we've got the tree grates around the trees. Sort of a very downtowny look with having those, those tree grates around the trees. Looking east near Reed, we're back down where the narrower section, where we don't have the parking on the sides of the street. Just wanted to point out that we've got, we sort of have planters in this view, we're sort of showing some like we have out there today. You know, some wooden planters, some metal planters, we've got some bike racks for people to park their bikes at. We've got trash cans down here farther down. So it's, it's very flexible stuff that we've got in the corridor. And then looking west near Quay, very similar kinds of things, again, just pointing out the various elements. We've got some benches, you know, they could face the street, they could face back into the property, you know, whichever way you wanna go on that. And then we also show in this example, you know, for instance, there's a large parking lot over here. We could put some, and this would be on private property, but there could be some, some parking lot screening put in. And we just, we picked some tall grasses, cause those are easy to populate. But you, this is sort of what was done on the eastern side of, of 38th with the, the little railings that are there and some of the plantings that are there. Trying to screen those parking lots a little bit. So we're gonna remember everything we just talked about in the flexible option, okay? We're not gonna talk about the fixed option. And so again, this cross-section's very similar. This is very similar, except you see the bulb outs are built a little bit differently in the fixed options. We're gonna, we're gonna have some views where you can see that either, this is again, the fixed option, very similar. And again, very similar looks to this because there's very subtle changes between these two. So again, looking east at Uppam, the big highlight here is instead of having a very flexible sitting area, you notice we sort of have these raised planters and they're raised towards the sidewalk side. And then we have some permanent plantings in here. And then we have benches that are set up sort of in a, in a conversation standpoint. You know, the, the benches are just far enough apart, if you don't know the people on this side, you're okay sitting there. But if you know them, they're still close enough, you could talk back and forth. And so it's, it's a much more fixed kind of thing where, you know, we could swap out the bench, but we're probably not gonna rip out the planter in 10 years and replace it. So it's a more permanent kind of thing versus the flexible. But it, it does give you a very different feel for the corridor with this option that we've got. And then again, looking west near Teller, again, the big highlight here is those bulb out areas that we have. You see how these are done very differently. We still have just two benches sort of facing each other, but we've got a big planning area around it. It's low on the street side because if we have the walls on the street side, we have to set things back so people don't clip their cars or scrape their cars. But then on the, you see on this one, it's got this little planning area. It's got a raised on this side, cause we don't, we also don't want people just walking across these things, it becomes a maintenance nightmare. And so we've sort of raised the backside and the front side's lower. There are examples of this around the metro area and even at my favorite place, Estes Park, has this kind of a configuration with that sort of slope plan right along the street. This is looking west near Teller, again, we're looking at the outdoor cafe. We're looking at this raised planter that's here. And depending on what we do with this wall height, these are shown right at 12 inches, which is a little low for sitting. But you could, you know, little kids could sit on those and, and sort of hang out. Maybe the parents are in there eating and they kick their kids out on the curb. Looking east near Reed Street, again, this just shows where before we had this very flexible option of, of lots of planters and stuff. We have a trash can, we have a bike rack, but then we have these, these very fixed planting beds that are around the trees. Now what you get with those, you get a larger planning area because you got a much larger planning bed. But again, it's less flexible than what you've got with the flexible option. And then looking west near Quay, again, a very similar look, showing that parking lot screening across the street. But again, just showing that different look of, of having sort of this fixed planning bed that's raised around the trees versus having the tree grates and then a bunch of planters and pots and things. So those are, those are the things, and we could go back and look at these images, we get into the discussion part of this. But we just wanted to run through those real quick. And those are all in that summary booklet that we, we passed out with the, with the packet. So this is what we have right now. The two options are very similar in cost. And quite frankly, depending on what components we need, we're, we're looking in the 5.3 to 5.6 million dollar range. This includes getting the survey done, the design done, a full road reconstruction. If we pull everything in the way we're sort of contemplating, there's not a lot we can save out there because, because of the, the logistics of, of narrowing the road and pulling the curbs in. You pull the curbs in, you sort of have to keep that sidewalk coming down and now the road's too high, so you have to drop the road down. And we're gonna look at some options, we go into more conceptual design and final design to try not to have to rebuild the entire road. But these options figure on rebuilding the entire road. We remove all the pavement, start over and, and, and start rebuilding the entire road. It includes the access enhancements, the creation of the mini zones, new street lights and pedestrian lights. And what we're looking at there is this one of the things, kind of the comments, we want LED fixtures, we want something that's very, you know, long-term, the bulbs last 10 years. They're very cheap to operate and those kind of things, we're looking at that. And probably city-owned versus Excel-owned, because when you get a LED fixture from Excel, they don't give you a break on the cost. It's the same cost for the, for the stuff, so it's not, it's better to have those city-owned. We've got the seating, the landscaping, the other amenities we have, the kiosk signage. We have a certain amount of electrical scattered up and down the street for the special events, the holiday lightings, those kind of things where we enhance our bus stops. We get the information kiosk up, so if somebody is walking the street, they know how far it is to the next pizza and beer place in case they're doing a, a pub crawl or whatever it is we're, we're doing out there, which I understand we do that on occasion. So the big thing that we wanna get tonight is we really, we'd really like to have you guys all talk about and discuss and, and select a kit of parts. Do you like the more angular stuff? Do you like the more wood stuff? Do you like the more metal stuff? Those kind of things. We'd like to talk about the preferred alternatives. Do you like the flexible option? And do you like the fixed op, the, the fixed option? And there, there are drawbacks either way. We've talked with our parks department about the long-term maintenance of all of this. There are things about the pots that are nice, there's things about the fixed planters that are nice. It really goes either way on that. And then really providing direction on the next steps, on where we go from here. Do we, do we do something in 2014? Do we, do we hire Intelki to sort of finish up the conceptual design that we've started? Which is to take the decisions made tonight and refine that and really get a good conceptual design up. So we can, we can sort of try to figure out all the problems we might run into, resolve some of those parking and driveway issues. And hopefully have that ready for presentation, maybe by April or so, depending on how quickly we get moving. We'd need budget approval for that, as we mentioned in the packet. We think that's a 15 to $35,000 job based on the full proposal that we'd have. We sort of trimmed the proposal down for this stage. We wanted to come back and see you all with, with what we have. And then maybe direct staff, if we like the conceptual design, do we keep charging forward? Do we do the street width designation? For those of you who don't know what it is, just go to our website, you can type, punch in municipal code, type in street width designation, it's very interesting reading. We actually have a thing where we have to, you know, get a, we have to, council has to designate what the street width is gonna be. If we're gonna move the curbs in, we have to get a council designation of moving those curbs in. That would basically, if we, if we keep charging forward, that would be sort of an April through June kind of timeframe. And then do we direct staff to proceed with the design? One of the things we're looking at as a cost savings measure is we'd be doing the survey and the design in-house with our city staff with help from, from somebody like Intelki to help us with the things that we don't do in-house very well, which is the landscape, the irrigation and the streetscape elements and all those kind of things. We, we can handle curb gutter and sidewalk and those kind of things, but, but all the other fun stuff, we're gonna need some help with. We think we can get that done July through about December and go out to bid early in 2015 and that kind of thing. And then the last thing is, is, you know, great, we get all this design work done, now how do we pay for a real project? So we could also do some investigating on some funding options, see if there's some grants available out there, what other things we might be able to do. And so that's, that's really the end of our presentation. We can certainly go back and look at any of the slides we have, but we'd like to keep moving forward, at least tonight, on picking a kit of parts. Now if council decides not to move forward with any more design effort and those kind of things, we can certainly just, you know, record our decisions that we make tonight and get those put on the shelf. Or we can keep charging forward on this thing, if that's the council's will. So that's kind of where we are, so we're just open at this point for questions. We can jump back and look at any of the slides and, and cover anything. I know that I talk really fast, certainly slower tonight than I did the floodplain thing. But, but certainly we're available and, and I think we've got Dina's voice where she can actually answer a couple of questions at least that people may have.
Great, thanks Mark. You ready? We're just, we're ready for some discussion.
So what I'm hearing is that we can do one through five parts, do you wanna leave that last slide up?
Yep, we can certainly leave that last slide up and we can jump back to the other slides that we need to.
So we start out with some lots of discussion and questions on what we've seen. Show a hand.
Just as a gift to start the conversation for everybody. My personal preference would be the flexible design, except I'd really like to have, like McDonald's, I want a number three. Because there are things I like about both, as you, as you mentioned. But I really like the idea of movable chairs. I realize there's gonna be some vandalism with that and some disappearance, but I like the whole attitude of people arranging their conversation area to suit themselves. So I like that. Some of the light options concern me because the flexible option, which is something I think I prefer, calls for taller lighting. And I'm, I'm worried about street pollution. And I think we have some areas of the city where we have bold, uh, street lights that essentially are light polluters. I want lights that shine down and not around.
Yeah, and anything, anything that we would do, we'd meet our dark, the dark sky requirements that we have in the metro area. So anything's gonna be a downward, even the, the fixture sort of looks like it's shining up, we'd pick something that still shines down. Cause we don't need to light the night sky, we need to light the ground. So, so even if it appears to sort of be shining up, they have some options available where by using, because LEDs are so directional. You know, with the old incandescents, you would have a lot of light spill beyond the sort of reflecting part of the fixture. With the LEDs, they can really zero that in and, and really direct all that light downward and not have a lot of light pollution. So that's, certainly would be one of our goals, is to not have light pollution.
And then another comment, the, the pots thing. I, I would like to have something in that regard, more like the, the fixed design that has something low. I think the pots are a visual barrier to the, I wanna remove visual barriers from the street.
Okay, sure.
But I, I wanna have plants and flowers, but just not the, the tall barriers.
Sure.
I think this was brought up at a previous meeting, but I have two questions. Number one was, in either plan, were there spaces for bike lanes?
No, neither, neither plan allows for the bike lanes. So if you, if you sort of think about the way the corridor's striped today, in that narrower section east of, east of Wheat Ridge Cyclory, we lose the parking on the south side to get that amenity zone on the sidewalk. We lose the bike lanes to get the amenity zone on the sidewalk on the north side. And we just don't have enough real estate. If we, if we wanna keep the bike lanes, and I understand there's a lot of folks that like bike lanes. Our new director is a bicycling commuter, so he loves bike lanes. We'd have to lose something else, we'd have to have narrow sidewalks or we'd have to get rid of the trees in the mini zones. There's just, there's just not enough real estate. Unless we start acquiring ground and we'd need five feet from both sides or 10 feet from one side. And then we really start impacting folks on their parking and those kind of things. So we were going with a really low-impact design, so we just, we just physically don't have the room for the bike lanes. What our, what our bike head master plan calls for in 30th Avenue is sharrows, which means we do some, some, there's a particular marking you put down on the street and some signs you put up just to alert folks that there are gonna be bicycles here, please be careful and be cognizant of that. But there's not a dedicated bike facility with these designs. And as, as Ken mentioned in his presentation, that what, that, that sort of ranked number three below everything else on, on that. So, so that's, that's where we kind of landed on that, but.
Okay, and then my second question was regarding the ongoing maintenance between A and B, there's definitely no?
There's, there's definitely pros and cons both ways. When you have lots of pots, you sort of have to plant those every year. And you don't have as much, as much ability to have perennials in those. We have weather like we had this last time, with it getting so cold, those pots will completely freeze up inside. And we, we tend to lose even hardy perennials and those kind of things. So, so pots are really more of an annual thing and we, and it's hard to keep perennials alive in those. With the, the raised planting beds, those larger areas, because it's more like the ground, we have a bigger shot of keeping perennials alive. And so there's less annual planting, but, so it really does go, but they're also lower to the ground, so they're maybe a little harder to maintain. And that kind of thing. So there, there's so many pros and cons both ways that, that. Parks has thrown up their hands, no, they, they're fine. You know, we're gonna work with them on what we design that makes sure that it's, it's easy for them to, relatively easy for them to, to take care of.
Okay, and in another previous presentation, I remember seeing a larger amount of the grass being used at the school for amenities, is that?
You know, some of the earlier designs that we talked about earlier in 2013, that, that Tim had brought forward, our previous public works director, had lots of green colored on them because we were thinking more grassed amenity zones like we've got on the eastern side. But really for a downtown area, you want that area to be walkable. And when you have parades and special events, you want people to be able to stand there and not kill all the grass. And so it's really more of a hardscape thing. And, and with what we're encroaching in the school there, we're trying to keep that, that level of encroachment on the school property about where the sidewalk is today. And actually I think they gained some grass back. Now certainly what happens beyond the sidewalk and onto the school property is part of what, you know, Ken's talking about where we got the green and we've got all that grass and is there something else we can do with that besides just have it be grassed and, and not a terrible?
Is the school willing to work with us on any of that?
I think that's more of a, maybe a Ken, Ken response.
Yeah, we, we've, we have a good relationship with the school district and I've been working with them on the joint use of, of their property. And I think you're aware, council's aware that we do have a, a MOU with them, a memorandum of understanding to use the green for special events, we do pay them a small fee. But as Ken mentioned earlier, that's, you know, our hope is to take that. our hope is to take that maybe a step further and seeing if it, that could be utilized as more of a public plaza or some type of gathering space and see if the school would work with us on that.
I guess my questions center more around, it feels like right now we're sitting in the car dealership looking at, should we get a lift kit, a roof rack, what color we want versus how are we going to pay for this is a central question. And I find it ironic that it's the last question up there, even if, and it seems like that should be the, the first part of it is, how do we pay for this type of endeavor, given the fact that we certainly don't have this kind of money laying around? Setting aside the, the question of, should it be city council's role to be deciding this versus letting the people decide the expenditure of this kind of money? I know when the rec center was built, that was a question posed to the voters because it was so much money, and it does give the voters a chance to buy into the project more if they do choose to pass it. So I guess my preference would be, first of all, to not make any type of decisions in a study session of this magnitude, and then also start with the question of, how do we fund this? I was looking at the Colorado State sales tax revenues from 2010 to 2013, and it looks like across the state, there's been about a twenty percent increase in sales tax revenues across the state on average. So if we're looking at the effect of the revitalization efforts on Thirty-Eighth Avenue showing a twenty-one percent increase, we've only gained about a half a percent above the state average over the past three years. And my question is, is are we being responsible stewards of taxpayer money by pushing forward an effort that's only getting us a half a percent above where everybody else is?
Do we need a response to that, or...
Well, I can, I can speak to that a little bit. I, I haven't looked at the Colorado State revenues over that period, but I can just speak to, to what the city's experienced. And, you know, Wheat Ridge does not typically track along with the state increases in revenues, unfortunately. We see a much smaller increase. And I, what I can say is right now, we're experiencing about a three to four percent increase in total sales tax across the city. And I think our report shows, year, year-to-date, we're seeing about eleven percent increase right now on, on Thirty-Eighth Avenue alone. So that, that's the only comparison I have. I don't have the state numbers with me.
Well, that's, the other thing is that when I looked at the Jefferson County numbers, it appears that the increase from this year to last year, just across Jefferson County, is about twelve percent. So we're, it doesn't, I'm not seeing hard evidence that the efforts that we've put forth are dramatically increasing our sales tax revenues to where we can then say, now we've got this extra money, we can spend it on sprucing up Thirty-Eighth Avenue. I don't see the correlation between the, the revitalization of the street and the businesses on the side of the street. We have a lot of businesses on the list of sales tax generating businesses that aren't generating any sales tax at all. I guess one clear question I have is, there's a lot of talk about thirty-five new businesses on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. How many of those thirty-five are, for instance, Osaka Spa turning to Obal, uh, Oblon Spa? How many of those new businesses aren't anywhere near generating any kind of sales tax at all?
Well, again, we, we provided a, a cumulative report of sales tax generation along the corridor, which include all businesses. And I guess the direct correlation is, is a year-to-year comparison, which the report shows is eleven percent increase for the July to September period of this year compared to last year. So again, we're not comparing ourselves to Jefferson County. Wheat Ridge is fairly unique with its sales tax generation. So we're doing a close to an apples-to-apples comparison as we can with sales tax, comparing the same segments of the, of Thirty-Eighth Avenue over the same, same time period, year-to-date.
And what is that, how does that compare to Forty-Fourth Avenue or Wadsworth as far as businesses on those corridors comparing 2012 to 2013?
We haven't broken them down by corridor. Again, as I mentioned before, the city has, has seen about a, about a four percent increase in sales tax year-to-date overall. We're, we're studying Thirty-Eighth Avenue right now. Thirty-Eighth Avenue comparisons is about eleven percent increase compared to last year.
I just, it, it seems to me that in any sort of research, there's a control, and then there's what we're studying, and we're seeing an increase. And it's like, what is the cause of the increase? Is it because the economy's getting better, or is it because of the efforts of the road diet and, and the other elements that have occurred? I, I don't see that direct correlation.
Yeah, we, we can't, we're not here to, to say there's a direct correlation with any of those. We think it's all the above, definitely an economy approving. But, you know, you could say that four percent of, since the city's seen a four percent increase, four percent of the increase on Thirty-Eighth Avenue is, is due to the economy. The other seven, eight percent, you know, is, is it the city's economic development efforts? Is it the road diet? Is it what Wheat Ridge 2020 is doing? It could be all of the above. We're not, we're not here to say that there's one thing that's causing these increases. But there is an increase.
But, and I don't think anybody's disputing that there's an increase. I don't think anybody disputes the benefit to the city by having businesses do well. I guess my question is, if we want to spend five point six million dollars, or five point six whatever, where do we get the money for that? And my thought was you get it from where you're investing it, and that is in Thirty-Eighth, but I don't see how we get that. If you take the increase, not just the, the base in, uh, sales tax that we're currently getting from Thirty-Eighth, if you look at, if we're assuming that you get an extra sixty-three or sixty-four thousand a quarter from the efforts on Thirty-Eighth, it would take twenty-one years to recoup the five point six million from just that increase. So...
Yeah. You're, you're, you're not going to, you're not going to pay for the initial improvements that are proposed by the sales tax that's generated today off of Thirty-Eighth. And that's a discussion we're hoping to have with, with council tonight and/or in the future on, if this is, if you want to move forward with this project, how would you like to see paying for it? And there's, there's a number of different options to do that.
Mr. Starker.
Thank you. Mark, I'd, I'd like to spend just a couple of minutes going back and, and understanding your original design assumptions of sort of where mid-century modern is the design ethic. And, you know, before I do that, I want to say it was a nice proposal. I think you got some great ideas in here. And, but I want to, is this, is this a, an outgrowth of what we did down the corridor? Because when you get to Sheridan and Thirty-Eighth, there's sort of a, a modern-esque, a fifties, you know, sort of hot rod, if you will, sign? I mean, I, I guess that's, are, are we continuing that theme sort of?
Um, what I've been told is the stuff that's farther down the corridor is maybe more art deco, and so it, it predates, it's more of a thirties, forties thing possibly. I'm not an expert on any of this. However, I do know that the reason we landed on the mid-century with a modern contemporary look is, is as a result of the image preference survey we did. We had, if you look at that, if you got a chance to look at that, we had everything from traditional to ultra-modern to everything in between. We had six different images on, on each thing, trying to narrow down where people were landing. And, and they landed very strongly on this mid-century modern theme on everything except the lighting. And the lighting, they sort of said, we like the traditional, but, but we don't want to put traditional lighting if everything else in the corridor is mid-century modern. And so that, that's where that came from. It's from those three hundred and thirty respondents. It's, it's the, our consultant looking at all those responses and saying, okay, what, what was the predominant theme that came out of that? And it was those, those five points that, that came out, which was that, that modern contemporary look, but focusing in on that more mid-century thing. It's, a lot of our houses are mid-century. I know mine was built in forty-eight, so I predate this just a scooch. But it's sort of that kind of a thing where, where it sort of focuses on where our roots are and where our history is and, and really emphasizes that. And there's not a lot of other folks that sort of focus on that. Old Town Arvada is very traditional in its look. Belmar's very modern in its look. And so it's, it's all part of that thing of making our thing a very unique place. So that's...
And maybe, you know, maybe I'm trying to square it with sort of the, the rural ethic that we have, sort of the farm, the Wheat Ridge farmers, maybe some of that agrarian background that we have that I don't, I don't really see displayed or, or articulated in this design. If, if I were to drive around, is this more in line with what's happening on Fourteenth Street in Denver? Very, very linear, very trapezoidal, or, or, wasn't trapezoid, it was a parallelogram. Is that, is that right? You know, the, the sign that you had there?
We're going to see if Dina's voice will last long enough to answer your question, because this is more of her thing than my thing.
Yeah. And I think to follow up on Mark's comment about the mid-century, it's also very much following the rigid Thirty-Eighth branding process. That was completed, and it was the next step from the corridor plan. So literally, all of these efforts were, were following and building on the effort. So it started with the corridor plan. The rigid Thirty-Eighth brand had a very strong preference and made a statement...
Okay. That was part of my question, is, is it whether that was a, so that the design theme, if you will, has been established for a number of years in the marketing and the design for Thirty-Eighth, the, the ridge of Thirty-Eighth and that sort of thing. So...
Well, it's really started somewhat two years ago with the adoption of the corridor plan and the subsequent efforts from that. I would say in terms of the reference to farming and Wheat Ridge, some of the conversations we had are, are there subtle ways to bring that into the streetscape simply by the color of the paving pattern in the amenity zone? Having that be that more yellowy wheat-colored paving pattern, so it's a subtle reminder, but it also brings up the flavor of mid-century. That color was also popular there at that time. So it's not being extremely kind of overt on, on the agrarian history as much. But there, I think there's still, as we move forward with the conceptual design, there's clearly still opportunities to work in additional elements that might subtly remind us of that, potentially through the art that's placed on the street, through some of the little walls. You see that, the wheat emblem that's imprinted further east on the corridor. So there's still other opportunities to bring that in.
And so you think that there would be a flow in the design from what we've done from Sheridan to Harlan, it would, it would flow into the, into the design ethic that we're, that we're generating on the west side?
Well, I would, I would say they're, they're clearly distinctive. I mean, I think the Sheridan sub-district is, has the kind of art deco, has that motif, and that's that sub-district. The residential sub-district's in the center, and there, I think that's a future discussion, what happens there. Do the, say, the high-level lights, the streetlights, or the pedestrian lights, are there certain elements of one or either of the district that flow into the residential sub-district? But I think the city's made a pretty strong case, or staff has in, in terms of wanting the main street sub-district to be something very unique and different.
Thank you. Mark, I had another, if I could have a follow-up.
Can I, can I build on that too?
Yeah.
Yeah. Part of the thought with, with some of the grass plantings brings that wheat thing back also, and there also may be some imprinted paving images and all those kind of things. So, so that was definitely part of the conversation. And then that residential district in the middle maybe becomes that area where we transition from the art deco into the mid-century modern. That becomes sort of its own unique thing, but it's more of a transition between the two. So we don't have them sitting right next to each other and, and contrasting in a bad way. We'd have a way to try to, to tie all that together.
Talk to me, if you would, a minute about reconstructing the whole roadway section and, and the need to do that as opposed to, you know, coming two feet off of the curb line or, or however we're going to, you know, form our bulbs out. Why would we, tell me what's driving us to, to alter the elevation grade of the street?
So, so a lot of, a lot of what happens there is we have this very fixed edge at the outside of our easements and right-of-way, which is buildings. If you think about the stretch between Upham and Teller, we've got buildings right there with relatively narrow sidewalks and then the backend parking. And, and, you know, all of that, those, those sidewalks get wider. And so we, we don't want to have a step down in the building. So we start at that elevation of the building. We've got a slope down to the, to the sidewalk. And then often, in order to make the drainage work, we also have that parallel parking sloping down also. And then that's where our gutter pan is, where all the drainage is. And then by the time we've done that sloping down, we've gotten into the part that today it slopes down, and it starts to slope back up again. So we're eating into that. And so we sort of have to remove some of that, that area. In particular, where we have the existing backend parking today is where we're going to almost certainly have to remove some pavement in order to get all the sturridge out. Now, we haven't, we haven't gone out there and checked pavement depth. You know, we, we may have inches and inches of, of pavement where we can just mill off some and then resurface it, and we're all good. We could have a very thin pavement depth out there. And then we, we definitely have to reconstruct in order to pull this off. But, but I think in that area, we're looking at our street crown in that area, right around the school and Wheat Ridge Recastery, A1 Rentals, those areas, the street crown might drop as much as three inches in that area as a part of making that amenities on water. Because right now, it just comes in a little bit, and then it starts crowning up. We've got to come in farther, and then we crown up for a shorter distance. And so we, we definitely don't want to have streets that are like teepees out there. And so, so we sort of, that's where we ran into. Now, again, as we go forward with design, if we find out the existing sidewalks are steeper than they need to be, the parallel parking spaces are steeper, and we can, we cannot rip out the center section of pavement to do this, then, then we'll certainly proceed with that path. But right now, with, with, without going out and doing a lot of detailed survey, this is sort of our worst-case scenario. And then that stretch to the east, where Pierce, you know, from Pierce back to about where A1 Rentals and Wheat Ridge Recastery is, you know, that stretch, again, we've got very narrow sidewalks, no amenities zones at all. And so we're encroaching in that existing asphalt. We're pulling those curbs in. We can't pull them in up, we don't think, without, without creating issues on the sides with drainage and stuff. Now, we've got some options to look at those areas. We've got some ideas where maybe in that eastern half of this, of this main street project, maybe we don't have to rip out all that asphalt. We can do some things differently with the amenities zones and the planning areas and things to try to work that out. But, but we just, we've got to sort of get more survey and more information. We've, we've made some guesses.
Would it be possible for you to, to leave essentially the curb and gutter elevations and the drainage patterns that you've got there, bridge over those with a, with a metal plate detail or something like that to get out into your bulbouts and your amenities zones?
Yeah. The problem is, it's not just the bulbouts that come in. The, the entire curb comes in for the whole length. Because right now, we've got what used to be a four and five-lane section of road, and those curbs are actually coming in, you know, six to eight feet on each side. And so that's where we run into the problem, is it's not just where the bulbouts are. We could definitely accommodate that just where the bulbouts are, but it's, it's all of that curb comes in, which is why we have to do the street width designation. Because if, if it was just those isolated things, we wouldn't have to go through that process. But, but with having to bring all that curb and gutter in, and again, as we go through the design, we really like to think weirdly and out of the box in this little town, because we just can't afford not to. We'll look at options to maybe try to save some pavement, try to keep those elevations the same. What can we do to try to save some dollars on this? But as a, the worst-case scenario is, we've got to rip it all out and rebuild it all, just because of the drainage and stuff. We don't want water coming from the street back onto the sidewalk, for instance, or even, or even using the amenities zone as sort of our flow path for the water. That just, that's going to get ugly really fast.
And do you think you can do your, your survey and, and the civil design work in-house and save money? Is that, is that the program, do you think?
Yeah. We don't, we don't have a lot on the books for design work for next year right now. We're sort of finishing up our Kipling Trail design. We'll, we'll have a lot of stuff under construction again next year, like we did this year. But we think we could do that. And like I said, it's going to take us till almost June just to, to go through the process of finishing the conceptual design. We've got some more things to finish up on the conceptual design side. And then we've got to go through the street width designation process. And I'm, I don't want to really charge forward with design until we sort of get that process resolved. And then, and then in June, we can sort of start doing design work. We think we can finish that up in-house. It's, it's a relatively, from a, from the street standpoint, it's pretty simple. You know, we've, we've already got all these grades established on the sides. We're just sort of redoing everything to, to make the road narrower and, and make the sidewalks wider and that kind of thing. We're going to need some help definitely on the amenities zones with everything that's going on there, with, you know, what kind of plantings we put in, what do they look like, how are we irrigated, all those things. We're definitely going to have to hire some, some help on that. But, but we think the street part, it's just, you know, it's just curb gutter and asphalt and concrete. So we think we can handle that part.
Mr. DeTulio's requested to speak.
Are you done?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Couple of things. First of all, one, the question is, the kit of parts. I can't get down to that detail level. That's, to me, it's micromanaging. I don't really, in the past, when we did the streetscape east of Harlan, I didn't really care about benches and about lights. And I'm not going to worry about it this time. It's whatever the, the citizens want and the committees want. If they want certain types of benches or seats, I'm going to be fine with that. The bigger concern I have is that Thirty-second Avenue is a bicycle path for the hardcore bicyclists that want to get through Wheat Ridge and go from Denver to Golden. I get that. But what I, what concerns me about this plan is that we've taken out the bike paths on this section of the road for bigger and bigger sidewalks. And if this is really going to be multimodal, and we're going to have the fact that we want to have pedestrians and bicyclists, and we're putting these bike paths on Pierce, it bothers me that we're going to have people going on Pierce, east and, or north and south. If they want to get on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, there's not going to be really a way to get on Thirty-Eighth Avenue on a safe way. They're going to be in a shero in a, in a road. So for me personally, for the cost of this project, I would like to see more where we shrunk the sidewalks a little bit and added the bike paths on both sides of the street and not maybe lose all that parking. Because I know some of the businesses on Thirty-Eighth do like, well, they don't like the backend parking, but they do like the nosen parking or parallel parking. So for me, I think, I, either design is fine. I guess they all, the, the one that's more flexible is good. But why would we put that much concrete in the sidewalk and then not have a bike path on either side? And I thought one of the reasons why we sold this to Wheat Recastery was, we're going to have bike paths in this section. And so I would like to see a bike path maintained in this section and scale back the sidewalks. And then the last thing was on the price. So you're saying that this, this section of Thirty-Eighth Avenue from Pierce to Upham, if we went with one of these plans, the, this, this concept is going to be five point three to five point six million?
Yes, sir.
That's everything.
That's everything.
So that's what I was saying earlier. It's going to cost that much. So my point is, if we can go to the voters with a plan that looks, that has everything, it has bike paths, it has the multimodal, the landscaping, I would say, take this plan and take the final plan and this amount of money and say, voters, do you think this is worth spending five point six million dollars on? And by the way, here's how we're, we're going to ask you to fund it, a temporary sales tax, like we did for the rec center, or a temporary mill levy increase. But I can't go forward with this as one member of council if it doesn't have a bike path component in this, so that our residents could actually go to... But I can't go forward with this as one member of council, if it doesn't have a bike path component in this, so that our residents could actually go down to Thirty Eighth Avenue, walk, bike, or drive. So, and I, I don't, I don't think we need fourteen feet sidewalks, really, I mean, fourteen or eighteen feet. So I would ask that they would maybe look at another option within that flexible. I mean, the bulbs are great, but how many people are really gonna sit on a corner when traffic's going right by them, whether it's thirty-five miles an hour or forty-five miles an hour? And plus, we have nine months or eight months of winter to sit out there where a bike path will be used probably year-round, so.
Thank you. And was there, George, for you?
Sure, what the hell. I'm gonna editorialize first and thank everyone for great work, city staff, because I know that this has been a lot of work. The Thirty Eighth Avenue Leadership Committee, thank you for your commitment to this. Intellki Design, this is a great document, and I think, you know, it, it does very much what it needs to do as a continuation of work. I think what was referenced here tonight is that we've been working on this for quite a while, and really probably even, obviously even before two thousand and ten. But just kind of referencing the fact that in a lot of ways, you know, we've been working on this and, you know, trying to add and, and, and make the right next steps. And I think this is really a great document to do that. And obviously, all the citizens who participated, and there's a lot of participation that's referenced inside this document or inside the presentation. And I'm, and that's probably just the tip of the iceberg, because I know this has been a topic for a long time, so I think we need to thank everyone for, for doing that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer the first question, and then I'm gonna riff on something else. But the, I, I like, I like alternate A kit of parts better than I like B. Not exclusively, I think there's a couple of pieces inside of A that I don't like as much as the pieces inside of B, maybe the planters. But I specifically like the paving references in, in A, and I very much like the lighting, especially the rounded design in, in A, for what it's worth. You know, and I, I guess I want to say, as an extension of that, you know, and I also, obviously, am very, I care very much about the bike infrastructure in our community. So I want to acknowledge that, however, I don't think the, I, I think it's okay not to have the, you know, not to have the bike lane on here as long as we do some other work. And I say that because frankly, one of the things I like about this plan is the continuation and the solidification of the road section specifically. The fourteen-foot minimum to create the amenities zones and the, and the sidewalks, and I think that's very important. And while I totally accept that there's, you know, that there's some good reasons to try to get some east-west bicycle routes, I don't think that, frankly, I don't think that they're as important as trying to solidify that section and do the other work that's referenced in this design, which is really trying to get that amenities zone in a continuous way to minimize the curb cuts that are occurring in that, in that, in that area and, and, and create a pedestrian zone. I will just say then anecdotally, moving forward, I think we absolutely need to think about biking infrastructure and how it interfaces with this plan. And we've talked about it, I mean, I think really it's north-south routes that we need to bring into the street. I think if we do that, you know, and I, actually, I think it was just referenced, that Thirty Second Avenue is, is, is a, you know, is a, is an important route. We absolutely should connect to it, you connect to it going, going north-south, and I think that we should really spend some extra time in the design work trying to figure that out. But I will tell you, I'm not a proponent, and I've been honest about this since this came up in the planning committee or commission a couple of years ago, acknowledging that the temporary design allowed for a bike, a bike path, and the permanent design never did. And there was a reason for it, and the reason for it is the, the roadway section and specifically the amenities zone section and the, and those spaces. So, I mean, that's just, that's just where I fall on that. There's, there's some other things that I'll get to when we get into the other discussion of alternatives.
Is there someone who hasn't spoken on this before wish to speak? Tracy?
So Bud took all my questions. Thanks Bud. But that's okay, because at least it got asked, and I, I really was concerned about the, the, the prior section and how that rolls into the new one. And, you know, making sure there's kind of more of a graduated vision, so it's not so starkly contrasting, which is visually not appealing. And I guess, you know, if, when and if this moves further, then we'll worry about the, you know, the major impacts this is gonna have on everyone trying to redo Thirty Eighth Avenue. I guess my, my first question is, I mean, we could talk about designs and we could talk about what we want to do, but what do we really have to do to move this forward? And to me, that street width designation is the one that, I don't know, from what I'm reading, it feels like you have to have that before anything else happens. If you don't have that right, then it really doesn't matter what else we talk about.
Yeah, you're, you're exactly right on that. And the thing we want to do with, with that being sort of item B, is that, that we want to finish A, because we want to make sure that street width is right. And it accommodates all the things that we need. I don't want to get a street width designation and then get into final design and have to come back and do it again. We want to, we want to finish that conceptual design, we want to look at a few more things, we want to look at those impacts, those businesses, resolve a few more issues that we may have, look at some of those drainage things that, as we continue forward with the conceptual design, so we can really get that nailed. I want to, I want to come back to you and say, here's our street width, and it ain't changing. And so that's, that's where we really want to be. And, and we do have, you know, as far as our public process, we think we've done a lot of that to date. One of our steps in this next phase would be to have another public meeting, to talk about the results of this meeting. Here's where we land on everything, is everybody comfortable with it, what's our feedback, you know, what other things can we do? If somebody comes back with a crazy idea, elevated bike lanes, I don't know. You know, those kind of things, we'll, we'll definitely try to incorporate those. And, you know, we, we, we've got the bike lanes today because we had ten feet of extra pavement, we just didn't have anything else to do with it. And so we put bike lanes, and that was my idea, to put the bike lanes in. It was never part of, of any of the design effort that came into it. And, and they're a great asset, right now, I know the Cyclory loves them. We have monthly conversations about how great the bike lanes are and can we figure out a way to keep them, and, and we've got a meeting set up. It's not just about their parking lot, it's they, you know, they, they can tap into resources that we don't have available to us to try to keep the bike lanes or figure out a way to provide some kind of bike facility somewhere. You know, all those kind of things are gonna be part of that ongoing conversation as we continue forward with the conceptual design. But that's why we want to, we wanted, the next phase is that conceptual design before we do the street width. And I definitely agree, we've got to get that nailed before we go any farther and spend any more money beyond it. But we've got to sort of spend that money to get that conceptual design finalized, so we know what our street width is gonna be.
So the survey and design portion is, is actually is completely separate from that conceptual street design? Because conceptual street design is where you really believe the widths are gonna be at.
Yeah, it's just finalizing all the work we've done to date, and then also possibly talking about phasing options. Do we just build this part of the street, or we just say, you know what, we're either gonna build it all or we're building nothing? So we got, it's, it's part of that conversation, that's why there's the range and the cost. If we, if we say, we're either gonna do the whole thing or none of it, then it's more like the fifteen thousand dollar number. If it's, if it's, if it's, we're gonna, we want to, we want to do it all, but we think we might be able to get this funding in pieces, parts, then, then let's start looking at, we've got to look at, what's that phasing impact of that conceptual design? Where are the logical places to, to stop the, the initial construction before we do phase two or three or four or whatever it is? So, so that's where that thirty-five thousand dollar number comes from, because then you start to talking about, well, now everything's wiggling one way or wiggling the other, and it's all shrinking in. Do we keep bike lanes in the part that stays? And, and we, we have to have all those conversations. So that's why we want to finish that conception, that, that conceptual design before we proceed with that, that street width. And, and I really want to do that street width before I do any more design work, you know, real design work and survey on this thing.
That's why, I just want to be clear on that part, because it, if you get that far and you try to push on, it doesn't make sense to push past that until you actually, I mean, I guess to me, that's at that point where it's, you know, either fish or cut.
So it sounds like we need to come up with a, with a decision about the, the width of the street and the eventual uses of it as a, as a primary thing, which we also then need to move on to as well as the financial component of it and what all those, what all affects that financial component of it other than just a flat payback. So Mr. Giutulio?
I wanted to reiterate again about the bike paths. See, George, you, you, you said what I was afraid was gonna happen. You said, once this is set in stone, this curb and gutter is set, you can't move it again. So I would really suggest, and I hope somebody would support this, because we've heard this from the residents all across the city, that bike, or bikes are important. So I can understand why we couldn't take this, that more flexible design and say, okay, we're gonna take three feet on the south, three feet on the north, make a bike path and have that design to look at it. So instead of having a fourteen-feet side, foot sidewalk, you may have eleven or twelve. But why would we want to sell that short and at least look at it? Because I think that, like you said, once this is set in stone and that curb and gutter is there and you move the drainage, you can't adjust it anymore. So I would still like to see taking one of these plans and tweaking it to have a bike path from Upham to, or Pierce to Upham, because that's what we have in the pilot project. That's what citizens have used. And this bike path, George, isn't for, like I said, it isn't for the people who want to go from Golden to Denver, never to go. It's about the families who want to go down on Thirty Eighth Avenue with their tricycles. Instead of riding in a shero, they're riding on a three- or four-foot path, so they can get from one location to another. Now, I, I know, you know where I've stood on spending this kind of money on a road diet, and I'm willing to compromise here, but I'm asking for council to look, work with me a little bit and say, look, that makes sense. Because our community, if we're having families moving, you know, that's what we're talking about, younger families, we need to have something that's safer than a shero on Thirty Eighth Avenue. If a husband and a wife or a family, whatever that definition of family is, wants to bring two or three kids down there and walk up and down, or ride their tricycles or their bikes up and down Thirty Eighth. So why sell it short now, take an extra couple of weeks, come up with a plan that's gonna say, okay, here's a third alternative. It's just, it's the flexible plan with a bike path on the south or the north side, and see how it looks and lays out.
I do have a request from Larry, who's not spoken yet on this.
Well, I would just like to add my comment on bicycle paths, I think they're extremely important. I think any new development needs to take into account bicycle transportation. I, I don't bicycle every day, I bicycle often. I don't like bicycles on sidewalks. Bicycles belong on the street and in a bike path. And I think obviously there has to be some compromise here if that's gonna happen. But I certainly agree it's that important, and I would encourage other council members to, to give that their consideration as well.
Thank you, Larry. George?
So Jerry, to both of your points, I, I agree a hundred percent. I think that, that frankly, you know, just tip, tip my hand, I think we should tonight be, we should be reaching consensus on, on allowing for the continuation of the design work to get to final conceptual design. I think that I'm totally okay with that, including an investigation of the bike, you know, of the bike infrastructure as a component of, of that design. I, I agree as a component of the design.
If we move forward.
Yes, and I won't vote for it, is what I'm telling you. I, I'm telling you that, I, I'm, all I'm being is honest about what I think is important about the design session, section. I totally, I, I agree that it should be studied, and, and if I, you know, if, if it's convincing, then I might change my mind. But where I sit right now is, I think it's important enough to hold, hold on to these minimums for the amenities zones. But I'm absolutely, you know, as part of, again, as a part of getting to final conceptual design, which is one of our questions here. And again, I support us approving, moving forward to finalizing this conceptual di, design, narrowing it down. As a part of that, I'm willing to, willing to, you know, allow for there to be some investigation of how bike, a bike path fits into that section. And I think that's fine, we should do that. I'm just being honest that as I sit here today, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote for it.
Thank you, George. Mr. Urban?
If the bike paths are given room on, in, in one of these designs, would that help ameliorate the issue with regard to the road elevation? Because you're not dealing with such a intrusion into the roadway?
Possibly, again, without doing some final surveying, we just, we just don't know. My guess is, you know, depending on the bike path we choose, three foot is considered the bare minimum. What we have out there right now is five feet, which is a much more comfortable thing. I, I'm almost three feet wide when I'm riding a bike, so three feet's pretty narrow. And, and so, you know, it just, it just depends on where we land with where that curb lands compared to where it is today. You know, almost, the problem is almost any movement of bringing the curb in, you're, you're fighting great, because you're, you're climbing up the street as you climb down the sidewalk. So, again, we can certainly look at that, and maybe there's a, there's a stretch on the outside that's a little steeper, we can save some of the stuff in the middle, we can certainly look at all those options. We, we definitely, I don't like ripping out perfectly good asphalt, we're gonna remove as little stuff as we possibly can and proceed on with the design. It's just, as a worst-case scenario is, we, we think we've got to take it all out with the design we have today. Certainly in areas we might be able to, to not do that, but we'll just have to, we've, we've got to look at that and see.
To follow up on that, I didn't, I guess I wasn't aware that three feet was an allowable design structure for a bike path. I thought it had to be at least five feet by the code.
The, the minimum is three feet, and that sort of counts the fact you've got a couple of feet of curb and gutter there. And so the person can sort of hug the edge of where the gutter is, and they've got two feet on one side and two feet on the other side. Ideally, you want to have, like, right now we have a five-foot bike lane because, you know, it's, it's out in the street, it's not really, in some places it's out in the street, it's not right up against the curb and gutter. And so that's why we've got the five feet in most of the places that we have it. Ideally, you want five or six feet wide, you know, six feet's about me holding my hands out like this, and if I'm riding next to trees on one side, if we have trees, and then I'm riding next to cars going by on the other side with mirrors and things, it's nice to have this width available. You know, at, at even five feet, you're looking more like this, and I start to feel a little constrained in that. So it just, again, it just depends where we land. You know, if, if we've got, if we've got it up against parallel parking, we've got to have the five feet, we can't have a three-foot stripe between a road and parallel parking. It just, we're gonna, people are gonna lose their hips on mirrors and, and all kinds of things will happen. So it, it's a very difficult place to go, I mean, it's just, it's, it's hard to squeeze all that stuff in.
If I understand the discussion at this point, we're, we're interested in, in continuing on with the design work, but we would like to have that contain a, a bike element and, and see if that would fit in. And we're looking at a, possibly a three-foot design, excuse me, sort of a ribbon or a strip. Can I get a general feel of, is, is that the correct direction, or, or have I missed it?
I think that there's still a large contingent of residents in Wheat Ridge that are looking at another alternative, which is to do none of the above and to bring the, the roadway back to four lanes to allow for the businesses to continue to thrive. If we've seen a reduction in the traffic numbers on Thirty Eighth, how much more of a sales tax increase could we have had, had those traffic counts been up? As well as looking at whether or not we've actually even seen any kind of a positive increase above the norm based on the efforts we've done heretofore.
I thi, I think that's another question, which we probably have to discuss along with the financial question as to how, how to finance it. So I think that I would like to see at least an idea of whether we have settled on kind of a, a design concept that we want to go forward with, including some form of, of a biking component. Is, am I correct on that? Mr. Fitzgerald?
I absolutely want to go forward, absolutely. And I think we should have options for bike paths, but I think council needs to put things in perspective. We don't want to, we don't want to knock down this entire project just because it doesn't have a bike path. And if it's physically impossible to do it, then it is physically impossible to do it, but it would be nice to have.
I am in support of moving forward with concept and finding out more, including any bike path options. When it comes to the tax issue, I wonder, prior to two thousand and ten, had the city not made any investment? Had the city not wanted to go forward and do things with Thirty Eighth Avenue? Had there been, what, what tax impact would there have been then? We have had businesses here tonight that say, we came here specifically because the city started doing things. And so I think it's important that we invest in this area and keep moving forward. And so I am in support of, I prefer A, but, you know, I'm willing to look at other things. And I do agree that maybe if we could look at, if it's possible to do bikes, that we look into that also.
I think in, in response to the tax question, sorry.
I, I had just called another one, but you would be next.
I might, so one, one thing I wanna, I just want to be, I want to add two or three things as we start to frame up what is going to become a consensus on how to move forward with conceptual design. I, I agree with investigating on the, on the bike, the bike route possibilities within the section. One thing that I also would, would, would like to see considered is, is just a little bit of studying east of Pierce to Newland. And if you, if you kind of, if you caught the reduction in And if you, if you kinda, if you caught the reduction in the, in the ellipse of, of down, of Main Street, we've taken out Pierce to Newland as, as, as kind of, as, as Main Street. And I get it, I understand, that was some, that was part of our request, was to try to kind of compartmentalize and, and look at this. However, I will say that, I think that there's some real value between, between Pierce and Newland. It's why it was identified originally, literally, the architecture and some of the opportunity within the section of, of the street and some of the commercial, um, you know, some of the businesses in there. So personally, I, I would like to just kind of see an alternate or, or some, some investigation between Pierce and Newland to try to see how, how to, how to extend that, tie it in. It could become an ad alternate or something, um, that we could look at, um, if it, if it made sense. There's some important businesses there that I think could benefit by extending the concepts that we have between, you know, in, in, between, you know, where we're at right now, and I think it's worth studying that. There, there's the notion of the civic component. I, I, I think in, in finalizing the conceptual design, I would say that, I think, um, not, I don't know that we should design the civic space necessarily, but I think we ought to, we ought to be thinking about it enough that the design starts to allow for the, the thought of how that might, might be, you know, integrated, the possibilities for that connection, whether it be at the school property or elsewhere, so that at least, um, again, not to, not to add a whole aspect to the project, but just, you know, whether, if, if we're gonna go for the out, or our town grant or something like that, that we, we've got something in the drawings that references a, a logical, you know, connection, and that we're thinking about that. And then, I already said this, but, and I'll reiterate it and, and ask this to be extended to the bike, bike concept. I really, again, my feeling is, is it's the north-south bike routes that need to be, that really need to be, uh, enhanced, regardless of what, whether we do something on, on Thirty-Eighth or not. So I, I, you know, I'd appreciate there to be some reference to opportunities, um, between this plan as a final conceptual design plan, and obviously our bike, Pedmaster plan as well. So anyway, that's, I'll do that again if we have to, but I'm just, I'm adding a little bit to what I think, if, if we were to say, if we were to move forward with consensus, I'm adding a little bit to what I think I would be comfortable in, in terms of what final conceptual design activities look like.
So George, if I'm, if I'm understanding you, you would like it to be a, a more fuller concept in, in that there's, I'm sorry, Pierce to Newland, which of course would, brings up the question about, do bike lanes go, continue on? I mean, you can't have the bike paths to nowhere anymore. Uh, as well, as well as allowing for some, uh, possibly future civic space. So what you're wanting is a, is a, is a, is a real plan for the area, to make, to make sure that we get there at the end. I can see Zach with next.
Thank you. Um, to address the, the tax question, that was a, that was a main question that I had, was looking at, uh, some kind of control to say, what would have happened had we done nothing? And that's where, looking at the state numbers, seeing that since 2010, there's been a twenty percent increase in sales tax revenue in the state, that's the average, that's the twenty percent increase. In Jefferson County over that same period, it was twelve percent. So had we done nothing, we can expect somewhere in that neighborhood, I think, is an appropriate assumption. But, um, that, that was my, uh, impetus in looking for some of those numbers, to see what is it, what, what impact has these efforts had on the city's sales tax coffers? Because that's, at the end of the day, is, as much as it's great to create a place, we also have to create revenue. Because that's, again, if we're gonna invest five-point-six million dollars, it's, in my mind, it would be to generate even more money, and I don't see anything in here that suggests what this is going to do to come close to even paying for itself.
I agree that we don't know what the tax impact would have been had nothing been done, had the city not invested anything in Thirty-Eighth. However, we've had several businesses talk about the reasons they moved here. And we have had several businesses move in, and we've had a lot of citizens tell us that they like what's going on Thirty-Eighth, they like the revitalization. So, yes, you're right, we cannot tell what would have happened had we did nothing. But I believe the positive impact that it's had on the city is something to look at and continue.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I'm not sure if I was, I was being clear enough, but, and maybe Zach and I are saying the same thing, but, I mean, a, a report shows that since 2010 in Wheat Ridge along this corridor, sales tax has increased twenty-five-point-nine percent along this corridor specifically, um, over 2010. Over 2011, it's been twenty-point-five, and since last year, it's been eleven-point-nine.
So I just wanted to reiterate, I agree with George's proposed consensus, I would like to see Pierce to Newland included. I think, uh, George brings up a good point, the north-south bike paths need to be addressed. And I think if, if we do do a plan that has bike paths on Thirty-Eighth Avenue between Pierce and Uppam, that those bike paths that we're adding on Pierce should be tied into those somehow, so that, you know, someone could come down Pierce, go down Thirty-Eighth. And, you know, I think the only thing that, I mean, where's what I'm hearing from Mr. Urban? I don't think that he's criticizing the fact that we have more revenue, that's a good thing, right? But what I would like to say is, what's the benchmark on Forty-Fourth Avenue in the same time period has that revenue increased? On Forty-Fourth Avenue in the commercial areas in the same timeframe? Only because, if you look at the data on this chart, from Harlan West, traffic went up sixteen percent on Forty-Fourth Avenue, and then twelve percent on Thirty-second Avenue. So if, just, just to pull a section of the city, it's okay, Thirty-Eighth Avenue was twenty percent, great. Forty-Fourth Avenue didn't do anything, it went up ten percent. So then you have something to say, well, maybe, okay, maybe this changes did help Thirty-Eighth Avenue versus Forty-Fourth. But I think that generally, the city saw improvement in economics all across the board, because in 2008, the bottom fell out of the economy, Thirty-Eighth was vacant, Forty-Fourth was vacant, a lot of places were vacant. So I, just for a benchmark to say, yeah, Thirty-Eighth Avenue went up twenty percent, and Forty-Fourth went up five percent, would just be a good information to have to, to, anyway, to a voter who's saying, well, why you spend all that money on Thirty-Eighth? Well, just because you got twenty percent there doesn't mean you got twenty, twenty percent on Forty-Fourth. But if you had the data and said, well, look at Forty-Fourth only went five percent, or it went fifty percent. It's just more information for us to have. If we're gonna go to the voters, one way or the other, and say, here's a plan, here's a funding mechanism, do you like this? Um, it's, it's more data to have. So that's all I'm asking. But I agree with your consensus, and I, I appreciate the fact that you're looking to do that with the bike paths. Because I think if we're gonna try to sell this to the public, I mean, there's obviously people here who agree with it, but there's also people that don't in the community. If you have bike paths, you have the multimodal, it's, it's a best, better way to sell this project, especially when, once you change those curbs and gutters, you know, Bud, you brought it up, we're done. We can't do anymore, unless you go to two lanes instead of three.
Mr. Goff.
Ken, I'd like to respond to the sales tax numbers. Um, I mean, you know, we, we have, we have a study of, of Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and we set metrics to measure on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and, and our comparisons are, are year-to-year, um, sales tax data. Um, if, if you want to look at a benchmark, um, for the rest of the city, no, we didn't, we didn't compare on Forty-Fourth Avenue or Thirty-second Avenue, but, um, we, we do know that our, our total sales, sales tax revenues in the, in the city of Wheat Ridge are about four percent increase. So, I mean, there is somewhat of a benchmark for the whole city. Um, there, we don't have it per corridor, we, we could look that up, we can bring that up, we can, we can find that.
Don't take it as a criticism.
I'm not taking it as a criticism, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just telling you what the study was, and what the metrics were.
I'd like to be able to address, I'd like to be able to address some businesses on Forty-Fourth who are complaining about the money spent on Thirty-Eighth, and say, well, here's, here's the numbers, Thirty-Eighth Avenue got twenty percent in sales tax revenues, and Forty-Fourth with no investment really didn't, so, or did.
Well, the direction we received from council was to move forward with a plan on Thirty-Eighth Avenue.
Would you have anybody have a problem just looking at a Forty-Fourth Avenue number, pulling the sales tax data for a few years? I mean, it's not like, not like it's rocket science, but, anyway, that's just one of my, uh, and I'm not trying to defend anybody or criticize anybody.
I think, I think that's enough from this corner. Uh, do we have some more commentary on, uh, moving ahead with the, the planning portion of it?
Well, I, I was, you know, I was gonna, gonna affirm the, the now junior counselor from District One and his, and his bicycle pro, well, old, old.
It's like jumbo shrimp. It's an oxymoron.
It is. Um, but I think in terms of looking at the bicycle program, I think it's not just what happens on Thirty-Eighth, or what happens on Pierce or Thirty-second. I think when you start, when you, when you sit down, and I think it's a great idea to look at bicycle and multimodal transportation along Thirty-Eighth Avenue, when you really define what blocks are sixty feet right of way, where you have seventy feet, where you might have a little bit more or less, how you might use the adjacent High Street or, or Uppam Street or other, other feeder, feeder bike lanes, so that we come up with a plan that brings people into the corridor, and, and perhaps there isn't a full lane on Thirty-Eighth Avenue for those, for those blocks in the business zone where we have primarily, you know, amenity zones. But we, we're able to bring people in, and we're able to get them around, you know, maybe there's a few blocks that's a, that's a charrow, you know, because, because that was the, that was the right decision. I think we need to look at the best design decisions that will give us the best, uh, outcome for, for transportation and for, for the whole, uh, program.
Madam, Mr. Urban again?
I guess, in my mind, it would be, it would not be a Wheat Ridge downtown without some shape or form of bike lanes, because the only reason I have a bike is because I bought it at Wheat Recyclery, period. And that's, I would imagine, majority of people in Wheat Ridge are the same way. And it's, it's the keystone of the Thirty-eighth Avenue area is, uh, Wheat Recyclery, and to ignore that, uh, characteristic, or ethic, if you will, of the, of that area is, I think, negligent. There has to be some kind of, uh, bike element to this corridor, else we're ignoring who we are, that's just plain simple. I, I don't think there's a way around it, it's, it has to be a part of it.
I, I think we have sort of surmised that we would like to see at least a part of, some kind of a bike element in the, in, to go ahead with the planning, and, um, but we, we'd like to see somewhat of a bike, uh, element.
Yeah, so, yeah, so just like, uh, bike public art, and we'll leave it at that. No, okay. You know I care about bikes, come on. Um, I do, bye-bye. All right, let me, let me, let me try consensus, and, and before I do, I'm sorry, I just want to wrap up, because there's one other, and, and this is just my feeling, I, I think there's the two concepts, the two alternates, so this is going away from the kit of parts and into the second question that we haven't really touched on. I think there's some good, I think there's some good things about both of them. Um, personally, I see a blend of, of, of those two things. I think some of the raised planters perhaps, in certain areas, maybe at the ends or at some of the bulbous, create, create some accents and some ability to do some more planting. However, I really like the alternative A in, in terms of its kind of sleek, uh, look and flexibility, and I think some other people have mentioned that. I think all that is to say that we've all kind of come down on a, a blend of, of the concepts. Um, adding to the final conceptual design study, work east of Pierce to Newland, a tie-in of a civic component, just as reference to, to try to make, make that work with the final conceptual design. Um, as well as, um, bike, bike infrastructure, um, concepts both on Thirty-Eighth as well as north-south connectors. I will add one other, if, if people will allow me, that I think there, it might be reasonable in a final conceptual design to have, um, at least, um, some further cost breakout, um, of the five-point-six million. I think that's it.
Is there anybody in disagreement with those points? No? Okay.
I would just be in disagreement of moving forward with this concept, knowing that, um, there's a large contingent of the residents who don't see this as a, a good path.
Okay, thank you for that. So we will, we'll be moving forward, and, uh, actually, we do, we need to discuss the financial portion of it.
Yeah, can I get clarification on, on this consensus too?
Absolutely.
George, you said that there's a blend of the concepts, I'm not sure if, if staff has enough feedback on what that blend is. I've heard a few things, do we need to talk more about that, or are you comfortable with staff bringing that back? I mean, I heard you say a thing or two, you, you were fine. Tim said a few things, I, I'm asking staff if you think you have.
What I heard, what I heard was that there was a general, um, feeling about the flexible option over the fixed option. Um, we can certainly, and, and again, the pictures, the trash cans and all those things were just examples, we can certainly try to refine those things and bring those things forward. And we'll, we'll bring forward, uh, with the final conceptual design, just, you know, based on what everybody said tonight, and the feeling, and we'll go back and look at the survey again and see where things landed there, and, and see if we as staff can't narrow it down, and come back to you with, here's what we think our kit of parts is, and if nobody throws anything at me, then we'll keep charging down that path.
Okay, that works, thanks, Mark.
Okay, now do we need to move on to the discussion about the financial component of it?
Well, I thought you really could do that, too. Well, we, we should, we should talk specific about the financial component of, of, of moving forward on this piece, um, just so that you guys have an understanding of what this would cost, um, and you've added a few things, um, so I don't.
What do you estimate it's gonna cost?
Yeah, exactly, that's, I think we need to have a discussion, and Mark and, and Ken maybe can just speak to that a little bit. And if you remember, when we first had a proposal from Intellect Key to look at this, it was, came in at close to ninety. Yeah, this plan, but, but that included a lot of things that we're gonna move forward with now. Um, but those were cut back initially, and we got the cost down to.
Right at fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, so, um, there's that thirty thousand that will cover a part of this, but now a few things have been added, so I'm not sure if Mark or Ken can speak to this, or.
Again, given, given the numbers involved, we're, we're over the amount that, that, we as the, as the directors can, can approve, and that Patrick can approve, so, so what we'll do is we'll go to Intellect Key, we'll ask them for a new scope of services for it to finish the conceptual design. I think that amount will be over the amount that, that even City Manager approval can do, so we'll have to come back to council to approve that particular budget, and then we can talk about what that includes and all the things that are involved in that. So, so that, and, and my screen's gone, gone weird on me, so I apologize, I do not know what's going on with that. Um, but our, our next step, besides the kit of parts and the preferred alternative, was provide direction to the next step, which is direct, Intellect Key to finish the conceptual design. What we'll do as staff is we'll get a new scope of work and a fee from them to finish up the final conceptual design, just so we have everything nailed down, and we can have that further conversation with bike lanes, um, on Thirty-Eighth, additional routes around Thirty-Eighth, all those kind of things, and try to come back to you with something that we can get, uh, another consensus on, um, and that kind of thing. And hopefully around mid-April, we'll have to talk with them about what their workload's like, to see if we can meet that April date. But, but certainly, initially, we'll be back to you guys in a few weeks, um, hopefully to talk about scope and fee for, for continuing the very, very next step that we've got to do.
The question I have for council is, would it be a problem that they brought that information back to the DIA, so you can, we could vote on it there, rather than coming to a study session, then the DIA?
That's not my decision.
Yeah, we could just bring it right back for an approval of that contract. We don't necessarily have to come back to study session again for that kind of a thing. I think, I think we've gotten, I feel pretty comfortable with the feedback we've gotten tonight. Um, I think George's comments were very direct, and we had a lot of head nodding, so, so we can just come back to you with, uh, a contract from Intellect Key, and then if, if you guys think that's too high, we'll talk about what we can cut. If you think we didn't include everything we needed to, we can talk about what we need to add back, but we can just come back to a regular, a regular meeting.
Anybody have a problem with that? Cool.
So that is about the, the price of the concept versus actually digging into the concept itself? Right. Sounds like we're comfortable with that?
And then we'll, we'll talk then about what's next.
I, I, this would be now a discussion on possibilities of financing, um, as well as, um, I think we also have to, another concept is brought up, been brought forward as to, um, well, let's, let's just start, let's think of that and not bring it up after. Go ahead, George.
Well, clearly, the la- the last bullet point on your, was, was, uh, to give direction to pers- to, to, to investigate funding options, which, I mean, frankly, you know, I would like to ask for consensus to do that, I mean, it, it allows for all of the, of the, um, opportunities for us to, to discuss with that, you know, because I don't think there's, there's clearly not one way to do it. Um, and, you, you know, uh, I think, I think we should, we should give staff, you know, a direction moving forward to, to, to think about the funding options and be able to bring them back for us to, to, to talk about. them back for us to, to, to talk about.
And as far as I go, as I'd like to look, when you bring back those options, um, something that we did with the RAG Center, bonding and temporary, you know, going to the voters, like, as options, you know, temporary, yeah, or milli, whatever it is.
Yep, that's on my list, yeah.
Any further comments or discussions on that?
I guess, and part of the funding is, I would assume, a discussion around what are we going to get out of it? If there's any way to, to quantify, it, it's one thing quality-wise to walk down a nice, uh, nicely designed street, but from a dollars and cents, what are we going, what are we going to get out of this investment? If there's any way to quantify that, and the opportunity cost, that by pursuing this project, we are, uh, what are we giving up in other areas of the city, um, that, uh, what kind of cost does that incur to us? So, th, those are some of the key issues I have.
Thank you. Mark? Okay, we're good on that. I guess that, uh, ends that discussion on 38th at this point. Okay. Have you got everything you need?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, thank you all for your couple of hours.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If we don't want... The floodplain organs?
Um, well, they're leaving for that. We're, you mean about, because we're going to do housing? Five minutes?
Say no to them.
The Housing Authority appointments, we will be officially done on January thirteenth, I think it is, and then council will ratify them. Uh, I do have the honor of making that selection, but, um, tonight, we're going to, uh, meet the, well, the three people who are, who have, uh, applied for this position. Uh, and of course, Mr. DiTulio, who, um, spoke to us on, on, um, last Monday regarding his, um, abilities, and we also have, uh, Tracy Langworthy and, um, Chad Har, who's over here behind us. Would one of you, um, Tracy, do you want to start?
Well, I, there's nothing in the packet for me because in the past, it just hasn't, you know? You've emailed whether you wanted something or not and there's really not, I mean, there isn't been like a question. You just, you email it and either you got it, you didn't get it, and, and it wasn't, it didn't ever feel completely fair, but that's how that is. Um, I like having the application, but I would have preferred known that that was a system we were going to try, so when we come back in January to talk about council rules and maybe that's something we add as a component, because I, I honestly, I talked to Joyce almost immediately as soon as this was gone. This was something I had wanted four years ago. Um, it was not something that, a decision was made before I even had an opportunity to say, so I kind of just went through that. Um, I feel like I have some unique talents that may not be on that board already. I'm an accountant, which gives me a different viewpoint. I look at it more as financial. I don't, I know, I don't know anything about retail and I'm okay with that. Um, I don't need to be perfect at everything, but I do know money. I do know how to get the most out of it, and I really believe that between that and my ability to, you know, hear what other people say, balance that with what I really think is financially feasible, kind of gives me an advantage. Um, I, I, I get that there's, you know, there's a very sensitive, uh, piece on the agenda, the Fruitvale School, I live right next to it, I see it every day, but financially, I have to be willing to accept that that may not be something we can, we as a city can say than that we may have to pass off to someone else. It's, it's two hundred and ten thousand dollars that the city's negative. It's another one point eight million to get it even kind of close to being usable, and so I think that I can make the, you know, and it's not a pleasant decision, but I have to be willing to make that decision. If it's not going to work, if it's, I mean, one point eight million could go a lot further on, well, almost anywhere else on our roads in the city, you know, and that may not be my best choice, I have to be willing to do that and I believe I am.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Uh, Tracy was one of my first choices because, uh, um, she had come the minute, um, very quickly after I was elected, she approached me about it. Uh, and I remember Tracy as mayor pro tem and she really fought hard for that position and ended up doing a really fine job of it. I was kind of hoping to limit the discussion to the qualifications of the, the, the different participants. Um, Chad Har over here, Chad, do you want to, uh, say something? I selected Chad because of his incredibly strong volunteerism for the city. You've been on twenty twenty projects, seems like every time something's going on, I see his face in there, in, in, um, in a volunteer capacity. Plus, he has, um, uh, some wonderful skills in, in the building industry. He owns a sign, um, what do you call it? He places signs on buildings, big, huge signs, so he's very knowledgeable in, in the construction area, as well as you do what's called, uh, environmental design, meaning the interiors of commercial buildings. Uh, did you want to say something, Chad?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I...
Chad, Chad.
Could Chad join us?
Yeah, I'm sorry, please, thank you, thank you, bud.
Okay, does that work? Um, so, really, my background is, I grew up in a tenant-finish business, uh, construction company, so I'm really experienced with, uh, mo, remodeling and building projects and that sort of thing. Um, and of course, I'm a small business owner. I've, uh, I own a, kind of, kind of a couple of companies. One of them we started was a, uh, waifine and signage business where we don't really actually make anything, we install, we put it up, we erect it, that sort of thing. And then we've actually started in the last year, a, uh, design, uh, company, um, interior type of di, design company where we've done, uh, interior design of commercial projects as well as we're starting to do our first kind of residential project as well, so, um, so I'm real familiar with kind of all aspects of the building, uh, trades as well. And as far as, um, my community service and, uh, the Housing Authority, um, I'm really interested in what we're doing in housing within the city. I think it's really a big component. I mean, we need to have, uh, great residential neighborhoods and great housing to attract, uh, great people into the city, um, in all economic levels, so, uh, when Joyce asked me to be, uh, to, to look at doing this, I was very excited, so, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chad. Mr. DiTulio, did you want to speak as well?
I think he wanted to toss the...
Oh, Chad, I'm sorry, I mean, Zach.
Zach.
Of course.
Um, I guess the, the, along the lines of what Tracy said, I, I also wasn't aware that an application was required. Having, uh, been appointed to the Housing Authority, I wasn't aware of the, the mechanics involved in being elected to the city council and how that affected my position on the Housing Authority, and I'm still not exactly clear on how that, uh, precludes me from serving on the, the Housing Authority, but I wasn't aware that I was required to ask Joyce for that council appointment and that, so that, so I was negligent in that, that I did not ask her for that. Um, my background in the housing world is that I was appointed by Governor Ritter to the Board of Real Estate Appraisers. I was nominated by HUD to the White House for a champion change in housing. Uh, I have a breadth of knowledge, um, in the housing arena, well beyond, um, just your, your cursory interest in housing and, and I'd be glad to offer that expertise to whoever serves on, um, the, the Housing Authority because, uh, that, that's a passion of mine, obviously. Um, I think it, it's known to me at this point that I'm not going to be appointed to the Housing Authority, but it just, it feels a little, um, difficult to give up that, that position because I have such a passion in housing, and so my way of sort of rising above that is to offer my expertise and guidance to whoever serves on the Housing Authority. I fully support, uh, Chad's appointment to the Housing Authority. I think he's just going to make a great addition to that and I'd be glad to help anybody get up to speed on what's going on in the Housing Authority, but I too was a little unfamiliar with the process involved and still not clear as to how that all goes through, and I think there, there could be some discuss, discussion whether that's today or some other time as to how that all gets, uh, laid down. I didn't hear the dinner bell, so I didn't come running, so I, um, I think that that's something that could be discussed later on.
Well, uh, see, first of all, I, I just filled out an application because I wanted to be, uh, efficient and officialist. You don't have to fill out an application, nobody does, and, you know, when I made the appointments, I based it off of experience and background and I don't have no problem with Chad being appointed for the district two rep, but what I was addressing was the council rep because, um, I was on council when we created the board the first time and we rehabbed about thirty-plus properties. My background stems from the fact of having a master's in business and working in the commercial banking industry that, uh, economic development in this city, as we've talked about, is a three-legged stool. It's, in my opinion, it's economic development like Thirty-Eighth Avenue, it's housing, which is very important to the city, uh, especially when forty-seven percent is rental and our median, median income is forty-four thousand for a family of four, and then also code enforcement. That's the three-legged stool that makes the city hopefully a better place to live, work and play, and we, uh, have the Eastern Wheat Ridge Project, which we want to increase the demographics, raise the bar and get some of these properties scraped completely or, uh, purchased and rehabbed and you add square footage according to the net, uh, neighborhood revitalization strategy. Now, my concern is that the police department had pulled a list of properties that had, that were, um, continuous code violations and, and/or crime violations, and that list was going to go to the Housing Authority and they were going to use that list to have the broker start contacting the property owners and say, do you want to sell? And there's a, there's a plethora of those properties on East Wadsworth, and my fear is that, um, it's not going to be followed through because we're worried about a, a ten dollars here and a hundred dollars there. The group has about seven hundred thousand dollars in their general fund and about five hundred thousand dollars coming from CDBG funds. The CDBG fund money has to be income-qualified, but from when I was on there, once the money is recycled through, the seven hundred thousand could be market rate or better housing, and that's what my goal would be, is to look at our properties with our Larry Nelson and Cornerstone, really, to say, these properties need to be either purchased or scraped, especially down near the, um, Richard's Hard Estate area or areas that are, um, high rental and we have a lot of absentee landlords. Nothing against rentals and nothing against landlords, but the problem is, in some areas, is the absentee landlord, and when we were, we started this project, um, in two thousand, we focused on multifamily because multifamily was the way to go. At that time, you could buy them, create an HOA and sell them for a fairly decent price, but the bottom fell out of that market with financing, as probably Genevieve knows, it's tough to finance condos and townhouses, so the focus would be duplexes and single-family. And, um, uh, this is a five-year appointment. I don't know how much is left on that appointment, but, um, I have four years left and then there's two years, and I think Ms. Langworthy has two years left on city council. This isn't about junior versus senior council member. It's not about me wanting this because it's my baby, I'm vested in it, it's about getting the job done and getting some housing, uh, done in the city, and I think, uh, no offense to any other candidates, but I think I've proven that I can, you know, push forward and sometimes to the, to the detriment of my reputation of being proactive and moving things forward and, uh, getting stuff done. The board has a fairly new group. Um, Tom Abbott's fairly new, Jennifer Walters is fairly new, the one person on there that's been there a while is Janice, um, Janice Thompson from District Four, and she's been there the longest. I served with Janice when I was on city council, so, um, I'm afraid we're going to have too many new people on there. I like Chad's background, that's great, I just don't want to get stuck where the board is being directed by staff rather than the board directing staff and making decisions about housing and moving forward. And the Fruitvale School, we've added it, Zach and I added it to the agenda for council to discuss as a possible replacement of the Anderson Building. That's come up a few times, if council wants to do that, as to, uh, addressing that issue. So, the Fruitvale School may or may not be an issue with the Housing Authority, it'd be better if it was off their plate, so, um, that's, that's where I'm at on this, and, oh, as far as asking to put this on the agenda, Joyce, you guys asked me to put it on the agenda when I was mayor for a few appointments, and Zach, Zach was one of them, we got postponed to a study session, we talked about it, I passed on it, it was also urban renewal, so I don't think this is anything out of the ordinary. I mean, it's, it was just a way to get to know everybody and get to know each other.
Thank you. Um, and either one of you, I hope you will, you know, offer your opinions and advice and, and, uh, information going...
going forward, as far as the Housing Authority, whether you come, you make it on there or not, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, you already made a decision?
I had made a decision pretty quickly. And so, the council has to ratify it, so they will actually be, in a way, making the final decision. Yeah, exactly, you know the process.
Okay.
All right. I believe that's the end. Wait a minute, wait, staff reports, can't, can't, elected official reports. Do we have anything in that way? Mr. Larry, Mr. Larry?
When did I? I was finished. Do you have a question on that? I went to the annual Colorado Government Financial Officers Association meeting a few weeks ago. One presentation there that involved folks from the city of Westminster was for creative financing of long-term energy conservation. It was a really interesting presentation. Westminster sort of out in front on this. If we have folks interested in energy, or potentially looking at energy options, what they could mean to the city, I think that group would be a good one to start with. And I'd be happy to work toward getting that presentation for, for council, if you'd like to have that.
Patrick, has, has City looked at that sort of thing? I think I know, familiar with it, that investment starts paying for itself, kind of a deal?
I'm not, I haven't seen the report, so I'm not exactly sure what, if they're, is that they're... But we, yeah, we've, we've looked at things in the past with Johnson's Controls and companies like that to look at doing retrofits to our different buildings, to see if there'd be energy savings. And we are actually doing that at the, or the Active Adult Center and the Recreation Center. We've made some of those improvements. I'm not sure if that's what the report or presentation was concerning, or probably bigger than that. Yeah, okay.
Any additional reports?
Just think, we all want to make sure we reach out and support Chrissy in this time of her mom's passing, and recognize the, the force that Barb Davis was for the community, and want to just recognize that here, and make sure we're all reaching out to her.
Thank you, Zach, for that one. The services are tomorrow at Crown Hill, we're all aware of that, and at noon, right. I anticipate being there. Mr. DiTullio?
Weaver High School, just want to let everybody know that finals are Wednesday and Thursday, half-days, and then Friday, school is out completely. So, that's when I start, I'm out. But I always bring this up every year. I'm the, one of the teachers at the high school. I'm always looking for job shadows for my career exploration classes. So, if you can take a student for a couple of hours in Wheat Ridge or anywhere else, we have the transportation to get him there, and also the job shadow. And, you know, one of the, obviously, the careers they look at is public speaking. And I never had a student read any proclamations here, because, when I was mayor. But if, Joyce, if you are so inclined, if you're ever interested in having a student from the high school read a proclamation, they would, they would get extra credit. So, just let me know if there's somebody to pick up. Because it'd be a junior or a senior, probably. But also, that the career exploration class has the coffee shop that they were, they sell lattes to adults and staff on Thursdays and Fridays in the catering room. It's a whole business that they run. They have to order inventory, make everything from scratch. So, if any of you would like to come on the afternoons to buy a $3 latte and meet some students and get to know what's going on at the high school, especially if we have parents who are sending their kids to Weaver High School next year. I think one of the parents told me today that they have an eighth-grade daughter that's going to be going there next year. It's a great way to kind of see the school, meet, meet people. But if, Joyce, if you'd be interested, just let me know, and I could probably find somebody, they'd get extra credit.
Tracy, do you have something?
Just a small one. I, I don't know when it'll be on the agenda, but the senior, the, I know, it'll kill me, because I can't remember what we call ourselves. I just see the abbreviations all the time. Aging Well, Aging Well Wheat Ridge Commission, good gosh, is meeting for the last time. We're going to meet in December. We're going to firm up what we're going to bring to council and, and discuss, you know, our findings. Patrick did mention a very large grant that Senior Resource Center and the Jewish Foundation worked together and got, and they've, they have hired a person to administer that. So, I'm sure when we, we discuss December 18th, it'll kind of, we'll have to bring in and weave in how that impacts what we say, and what additional services, and, and really, because it's more services, but, you know, how do you maintain them in the long run? And we don't want to step on anyone's toes. We want to be able to take that money and help our citizens more, but we don't want to commit to a long-term plan of spending money that we don't necessarily have. So, we'll be working through that before we come to you with the final report.
Thank you. Mr. Starker? Mr. Fitzgerald? Nope. Let me just say one thing. You guys, there were three of us, three of you, plus myself, and we attended a Dr. Cog, little seminar this morning. Very interesting on the fabric of this, of the community, is, is, I think, the word that they used. And it was interesting how much it tied in with the work that the effort we're doing on 38th Avenue, as, as well as what it's like to try to finance these sorts of things this time of, in the country, all over. It was, it was very informative, and, and I, I think we all enjoyed it. It made us realize that we've got a tremendous amount of potential in this city, and, and we have to approach it with, with a plan and, and with good, solid thinking. So, that was a joy, and, and thank the three of you for, for joining, for, for attending that today. That was wonderful. Mr. Fitzgerald?
One of the major developers, who was a speaker at that conference, fantastic guy, I'm very impressed, offered to come out and talk to us about what they were doing, and that's something we should definitely explore.
In two areas, both, both our, our own, our own development here in 38th, as well as our RTD site. Apparently, his firm was a consultant for Arvada to, for their RTD site. So, we really, I'll, I'll get with Patrick, and we'll get in touch with him and bring him out. Great. That's it? Janelle? You got something? We're out of here, it's adjourned.